Good evening and thank you for being here. We have six out of nine of our board members present, and so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance tonight is led by Ms. Hill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repudiate all which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three announcements. The first is that Ms. Fugit had to travel out of the area for work today, and so she'll be joining us as soon as she can get here. Mr. Norman is also traveling and will not be in attendance tonight. The Knox County Schools Clothing Center is holding their spring clothing drive today through March the 2nd, which is Friday. They are most in need of items for boys, size 6 through men's small, and also girl sizes 6 to 16 is in high demand. So please contact the Clothing Center for more information, and that number is (594) Just a reminder that due to our spring break dates, our regularly monthly work session and voting meetings will be held during the first week of March instead of the second. Our work session will be held on Monday, March 5th, with a regular session following on Wednesday, March the 7th. Both meetings begin at 5:00 in the main Assembly Room at the City-County Building. Are there any elected officials here tonight? Oh, thank you Stephanie Walsh for coming. Councilwoman, Ms. Walsh, thank you for being here. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, could I have...
With approval.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Next is the superintendent's report. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I have several updates for you this evening. Given the very tragic event in Florida, questions have been raised since then about the safety and security of our own schools. I would like to take a few minutes to not only reassure our families but also share with you more about the expectations we have as a school district. We have approximately 60,000 students who attend one of nearly 90 schools, and we take very seriously our responsibility to provide the safest learning environment we can for every single one of our children. Over the last several years, we have put in place a number of school security measures that we feel have made a difference. We have at least one well-trained, armed, and uniformed security officer in every school. Access control strategies have been implemented at all of our schools that limit entrance during the school day. We have spent $7.4 million since 2014 to ensure that all of our schools have a video surveillance system, and we continue to upgrade our schools' existing video camera systems. Based on ongoing security analysis, we've added fencing and secure vegetables at many of our schools. All of this has helped make our schools a safer place for our students and our staff. Is it perfect? I'm not sure we can ever say we're perfect in this regard, but I can promise that our district and school administrators, school security, and others work diligently every day to make our facilities the safest as they can be. In recent days, we've discovered there are issues in how some of our schools are reporting potential threats. Our protocol is for principals to immediately share any school safety concern or reported threat to the school's security officer and/or law enforcement. This, we've learned, may not always be occurring, and I will be taking additional steps to ensure that all of our administrators understand and follow established protocols. We are presently working with our Security Department to revisit our safety plan and make sure that all of our administrators are aware of its contents. Also, we will be setting up additional training for teachers in our schools. As I stated, there have been some instances where protocol has not been followed. We have carefully reviewed those instances and are taking corrective action. Our employees will be accountable for following our protocols. I want our families to know that our schools are as safe as we can make them. That doesn't mean I can guarantee something won't ever happen, but I can say we will work our hardest every day to make sure that something doesn't happen. On Thursday, February 22nd, Knox County Schools honored nearly 200 teachers during its 2018-19 Teacher of the Year celebration at the Knoxville Convention Center. We really appreciate Life Touch sponsoring this great event. The district-level winners are Madison Snyder from Bonny Cate Elementary, J.T. Hicks from Cedar Bluff Middle School, Brian Schultz from L&amp;N STEM Academy. We will be recognizing and telling you more about these three outstanding educators at our April Board Meeting, and I just want to say thank you to our board members that were in attendance at our celebration. Thank you, Mrs. Bowns, Mrs. Roundtree, Mrs. Dethridge, Mrs. Owen, Mrs. Horn, and Mrs. Hill for attending the event last week. Our last two Strategic Plan Community Input Meetings will take place tomorrow at Carter Middle and on March 8th at Cedar Bluff Middle. In addition to these meetings, we'll be gathering community input through an online survey, which will be shared via social media and email. The middle school music department will present the 2018 Honors Choir Concert on Tuesday, tomorrow, February 27th at 6:00 p.m. at Northwest Middle School. The high school choral showcase will take place on Tuesday, March 6th at 7:00 p.m. at Bearden High School. March 2nd is Read Across America Day. This is a nationwide reading celebration that takes place annually on March 2nd, Dr. Seuss's birthday. Across the country, thousands of schools, libraries, and community centers participate by bringing together kids, teens, and books. The Recruitment Fair will take place on Saturday, March 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Central High School. And for this, mark your calendar for National School Breakfast Week, March 5th through 9th. This year's theme, "I Heart School Breakfast," encourages parents, students, and school officials to socialize over school breakfast. This is an opportunity for all of us to share the benefits of a healthy school breakfast. Madam Chair, that concludes my updates for this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any questions from the Board regarding the superintendent's report? Okay? If not, I would like to introduce Robert Gowan and Elizabeth Millsaps of Millsaps-Gowan Government Relations, and they will travel from Nashville, and thank you so much for being here. Board members, their presentation is attached to the agenda as attachment number four, if you want to follow along. Thank you both.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mr. Thomas, thank you for having us this afternoon. The way our class winter meeting schedule fell this year coincided for the first time with a school board's meeting, which was yours, and that's offered to come up and cover most of the material that we covered a couple of weeks ago with the other three school districts, but you get the benefit of, I guess, three more weeks of activity, so we're a little bit farther along and hopefully closer to the end. And you have the PowerPoint that mostly the PowerPoint's covering some things that are new this year that we wanted to bring to your attention. But before we get started on the PowerPoint, I wanted to talk about or give a general overview of what's going on with the legislature. This year, I've been around the legislature going on 25 years. The most number of retirements that I've ever seen have been announced. We're just double-checking our numbers, and it looks like between 27 and 29 members of the House have or will announce their retirement, and in the Senate, there are eight. Now, some of those House members are going to end up in the Senate, so some of those faces will be the same but in a different house. But we are expecting, just with that, at least a quarter of the General Assembly turning over before there are any elections this fall. We are also in a new building this year. The legislature's still meeting in the Capitol for their main meetings, but we're now, rather than Legislative Plaza, we're in Cordell Hall. And if any of you have not been to Cordell Hall yet and you need some direction, we're still learning our way around, but when you're down there, let us know, and we'll be glad to show you what we know so far about the new building. We are expecting this to be a fairly short session. You have Speaker of the House running for governor, and you also have the leader of the House Democrats running for governor. Both have serious campaigns, and everybody else is wanting to get through with a session during election year generally, but we anticipate probably mid-April adjournment, assuming everything goes okay with the budget. And speaking of the budget, we've got a slide. First slide, we'll talk about the money that has been recommended for K-12, but just a general overview of the budget. Right now, state revenues are running between $180 million, $200 million more than what was projected, and that's good, but that is not the kind of over-collection that the state has experienced for the last three or four years. If you remember, for at least the last two years at this point, we'd had about $1 billion in additional revenue. So it's probably a sign that the Funding Board did a better job projecting this year, but also a sign that the economy is slowing down just a little bit. What you want to talk about?
And I'm Elizabeth Millsaps, and thank you all so much for having us here today. One of the things that Robert mentioned is the number of retirements in the legislature. This has a really significant impact on the kind of education community, specifically there are two House Education Committees at this time. Both of them are chaired by legislators who are going to retire. Harry Brooks, who's a member of your delegation, will be leaving, and John Forgady, who's a former school superintendent, is also retiring, so we'll certainly suffer those losses. One of the education subcommittee chairmen is Roger Kane, who is a member of your delegation, who'll be retiring, and the fourth of those four leaders is Chairman Mark White, who's from Memphis and is rumored to consider running for the Senate if Senator Norris is confirmed to his federal judgeship. So we could be looking at an entirely new cast of leaders next year, which is a big change for us, and obviously, education is kind of the hot place to be in the legislature this year, so everybody likes to talk about it, everybody wants to be fully engaged in what's happening in our schools. So we anticipate some vying for those leadership roles within the legislature this year. We'll have a new governor next year. That means we'll likely have a new education commissioner, so that change is going to go on, not just at the beginning of the legislature, but over the course of the winter and spring next year. That will have a pretty big impact on some of the work that we're doing, so we'll want to be engaged with new members and new leadership to make sure that they recognize the different needs that the urban school systems really have. There are currently 376 bills that we are monitoring that impact K-12 education. That's a huge category for each of you all, and while you all know more about education than probably anyone else that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, it certainly is a struggle to keep up with the logistics of how many of those bills are moving, and so we really appreciate Terry taking time every Friday morning to sit down with us and kind of go through what's moving this week, what's the hot issue, and bringing it back to you all for deliberation as you need to. So we know that it's a big demand for us to reach out to you as much as we do, but we really appreciate the time that you spend. We also anticipate a new priority list for struggling schools to be run in the next year. There are a number of rural schools that are on the cusp of the current list, so there may be some changes in how that priority school list looks next year, that it may not be all urban schools. And we think that, while we wish that no schools were on the priority list, seeing kind of a more diverse population of students who fall into that category may help us deal with some issues that have come up repeatedly at the legislature, so we look forward to finding the best way to really engage new partners in that conversation to find the folks that we need to find. I'll let Robert talk about the budget some more.
And specifically, the first slide has the list of proposed spending the Governor's made and his budget that he presented at the end of January. Biggest item there is $55 million for salaries. Again, that's a healthy number that calculates to about 2% more than the state invested in salaries last year. In addition to that, you have $48 million for BEP growth. That $27 million for health insurance is, and I've never seen them do this before, that's the state's portion of the health insurance increase. Part of that was for an increase that the state experienced in January. Then there's another part of that that the state is anticipating having an increase in January of 2019. Then an increase for state's portion of retirement. That $18 million is, last year and this year, it's a new line item in the Governor's budget. The state has been projecting the amount of student growth that there will be statewide. That represents about 1,900 new students that the state could have at the end of the next school year. And then another new line item this year is $13 million for RTI. As you know, for the last five or six years, districts have been paying 100% of the cost of RTI. There's been legislation that we have brought, other people have brought over the years, asking that the state include this as a BEP component. That doesn't come close to paying for what districts are actually experiencing, but it is a start, and it's a big deal that it is now part of the BEP as a separate component, because in the past, you've been expected to essentially use your salary dollars to pay for anything you needed for RTI. And then $10 million, I think this is the second or third year that the state has proposed additional money for those schools that are performing in the bottom 5%.
An issue that has received a lot of conversation, certainly within your board and your community, is looking at student growth portfolio models. Pre-K is a controversial issue for all, and certainly, the legislature is working through that, and Eddie Smith, representative from your delegation, has been working to create kind of a "hold harmless" year for one more year to give that a chance to maybe have some of the kinks worked out and to not fully walk away from that model, but to engage and solve some of the problems and get some more teachers on board with how that's going to work and make sure that it's something that can roll out. One of the things that he also wants to do is fold in some additional portfolios and growth models for kind of non-traditional classroom subjects, so that your art teachers, your world language teachers, your music teachers aren't in a position where they are forced to be graded solely on the performance of the overall school. One of the things that we continue to hear conversations about is that that needs to be something that teachers are really driving so that they have some buy-in and some control over how that process works, so that they can be engaged and it can benefit them as they go through this process. I think I talked about both of those kind of at the same time. The next issue that has been quite the surprising controversy this year is lead and drinking water. There are two pretty substantial bills that are moving forward to deal with that. The first is from Representative Staples, who, again, is a Knox County representative, that would require you all to adopt a policy for how you do your water testing and then how you notify your parents. One of the issues that we've worked on heavily is to make sure that you have some flexibility in that notification. If it's one source in one school, certainly, you want to reach out to those parents immediately, but we don't know that sending a notification to every student in the district is necessarily the right solution to that problem. It's cost prohibitive. People may be a bit reactionary when we see that, and if you can reach out to the parents that are truly involved in any sort of incident that may happen, you have the ability to talk to them in a more direct and specific level, so we're happy to have worked through some of that. This gives you all the ability, as a board, to set that policy for how your testing will work, what your remediation plan might be, and what your notification plan might be. The second bill on here requires staff and parents to be notified when lead levels reach a certain area. This is to combat a particular concern that Representative Powell from Nashville has, that currently, if your city or your municipality or county tests your water treatment facility and there's a problem, they notify the Director of Schools, because that's technically the customer of the water quality program, but there's not a path by which that notification would go to parents, whose kids might be impacted by that. And this is a way for him to kind of look at some solutions to make sure that that information travels to the appropriate parents as well.
And I'm going to talk about several charter school bills, but I want to encourage everybody, if you have any questions, feel free to stop us. First bill we wanted to talk about is House Bill 1880, and this is up again this week. Last year, the administration passed a bill called the High Quality Charter Act, and one of the hallmarks of that was that if a charter school ended up on the priority list, that charter school would be closed automatically. So that bill's been the law since July. This bill would change that law, and as it's currently drafted, would give charter schools a shot at showing up on another priority list. You would have to show up on two priority lists. We are opposed to this. We're working to get changes. It's our view charter schools were put in place to do better than the traditional school could do, so if it shows up on a priority list, we thought the administration was right last year that it's the right thing to do to close that school. Next bill is House Bill, or I'll call it Senate Bill 1605. Last year, in that same bill, there was a provision, the bill that I just discussed, there was a provision that required the district, upon request from a charter school, to provide student information to charter schools. You may be familiar with controversy in Metro. They have refused to provide this information to the ASD and to charter schools, because their position is that providing that information would violate FERPA. The state sued Metro, and that lawsuit has been decided at the Chancery Court level, but there's a date coming up, March 16th, that the chancellor has asked for the information to be provided or for the law to be changed, giving the district time to get the law changed or to get more clarification on the law. This bill would not repeal that requirement to provide information, but it would create limits on what the charter school could do with the student information. There would only be 60 days that the charter school could contact students and parents, and this is something that Class has been working with both the sponsors on, but it is something that the administration and the Charter School Center are opposing. And the next charter school bill on the list, Senate Bill 2399, this would completely eliminate that requirement that LEAs provide student information to charter schools. We don't think this has a great chance, but it is a bill that is still... Then Senate Bill 1664 is a bill that was filed, came out of a situation in Shelby County last August. A charter school that Shelby County Schools had approved decided they were going to open up in Bartlett, which is not within the geographic footprint of Shelby County Schools. Bartlett is one of the municipal school districts that was created three or four years ago in Shelby County. This would, and there was no law until this, and still no law until this bill probably passes, there was no law that required that charter school to locate within the district, so this bill would create that requirement.
And the next issue that we've been working on quite a bit is a recovery school program. This creates a path by which districts may partner with an adjacent LEA or a regional LEA to create a recovery model for students who may be in recovery from drug or alcohol addiction. While this is a fairly small population, it's certainly something that we unfortunately see growing with our opioid crisis, so this creates a path by which if, say, you wanted to partner with Maryville or Sevierville for a shared school, this creates a path for those funds to go, so that there's a clear way to co-mingle those funds and share information back and forth between two districts to serve that very specific population. It creates a pilot program that will establish three schools across the state that you may or may not choose to participate in, but we think it's an important tool for you to have some flexibility in there to be a way in which you can engage with the Department of Education, should you choose to pursue this in the future. There are several bills that have come forward, we didn't list them all here, that have to do with curriculum mandates. That's always something that we share your concerns about. We have a very finite window of time where students are in school every day. That time is incredibly full already, so we want to be careful that curriculum mandates don't overextend the course of a child's school day and that they still offer opportunities for the LEA and for teachers to implement the best tools in their classroom for their particular population. There are several bills that have been filed that address delays in standardized testing or the volume of standardized testing. We have some legislators, particularly in rural areas, that are still very concerned about the rollout of Ten Ready and how implementation's going to work. They want to make sure students aren't penalized, that teachers aren't unfairly penalized in their assessment program over the course of the year if there continue to be problems with Ten Ready. I think that the Department of Education is working very hard to address that, but legislators certainly want to be kind of on top of that to make sure, if any problems arise, that we have a vehicle by which to address that. There are also a number of legislators, and we think kind of a growing concern within the legislature about the volume of standardized tests and how much classroom time it takes, and they want to make sure that the assessments are giving enough information to the administrators and to teachers and to the Department of Education to help our students perform well and grow, but not to kind of overtake the work that they're doing in the classroom otherwise. So we'll continue to look at those. Another issue that would probably fall into this catch-all would be community schools. We are seeing growth in interest in community schools. You guys do it right, you've done it for a long time, and some members of the legislature have brought forth some legislation, Representative Love and Senator Dickerson, to create an opportunity to build a grant program at the state. It doesn't create any funding, but it establishes the grant, which may make it easier for community schools to use that sort of state hold as a way to draw down additional federal dollars or to bring in public-private partnerships, that this is necessary, maybe for some tax incentives for those public-private partnerships, and it just gets a good first start into helping community schools kind of grow within their community.
Elizabeth, I think Ms. Roundtree had a question.
Yes, I was just wondering if you all know of any bills that are addressing starting standardized testing and making it mandated for second grade?
The mood in the legislature is to make standardized testing later in school versus earlier in school.
Yeah, so I'm just inside the board as well. You know, the Department of Ed has been very, what's the right word for this? They've tried to use their position, and they put out documents to our districts and to our educators and to our staff that seem to imply that things like standardized testing for second grade are, in fact, required. And the document I'm referencing most recently is the Teaching Literacy in Tennessee document. I don't know if you all have read that or familiar with it, but in the opening section of that, it specifically talks about the kindergarten readiness portfolio. It talks about the standardized test for second grade, so I was just wondering what the feeling was in the legislature.
Elizabeth was right, the feeling in the legislature is going the other way, less testing later. Now, when you said that, I was thinking, there's a bill, but if there's not a bill, one of the candidates for governor at the Score Forum a couple of years ago advocated for earlier testing, but I knew I'd heard that somewhere, but it's not in the legislature.
And another issue that is incredibly timely is how we deal with legislation around guns in schools, that that's an ongoing conversation with the legislature. There are about six pieces of legislation that would allow maybe parents or administrators to have guns in their car during the course of the day. We, of course, would oppose that because of the federal funding consequences with that. There are also a number of discussions around arming teachers, and I think that's something the legislature will continue to move forward. The two pieces of legislation that address that specifically only target rural communities with a very narrow population definition, so the legislation that's viable right now wouldn't include your district, but we will continue to engage in those conversations to make sure that if it's something that the legislature does consider, that there's appropriate training, there are liability concerns that are addressed, so that we don't have to worry about expansion being something that would put you all in a more difficult position around a very timely and difficult issue to talk about.
And we couldn't come here without talking about vouchers just a little bit. As the slide says, most of the proponents from the past, people who have proposed vouchers in the past have said they're not going to take a run at trying to pass a... the past have said they're not going to take a run at trying to pass a bill this year, including I think most of the members of your, your delegation. We are on guard though for, for this one reason, or for multitude of reasons, but mainly this reason. Last year, the state of Illinois passed a tax credit education savings account program. And that did not go through any education committees. As all the bills we've talked about, we, we can catch them usually in the education committee. It was passed as part of the governor's budget. There's at least one bill that was filed late, right before the bill filing deadline that would, it opens up a caption in a way that, that the bill could be used to create a tax credit education savings account program. So we're, as I said, we're, we're on guard. And the other two types of vouchers are still out there. Bills that would increase the number of students qualifying for the IEA voucher program, and there are still a couple of bills out there that could be put on notice to create a statewide voucher program. But that's our, our presentation. Again, we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have. Appreciate you having us.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Tree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, it was back, I think on the earlier slide, about the RTI funding. I think that's great that they're going to build it into the BEP, but I'm just curious what the reality of that line item is going to look like when it gets to all the districts. I mean, my understanding was it was, would maybe fund one additional person per district is what I had originally read in some of the news reports.
It is, if I've got the number right, it's one intervention is for every 2,750 students. Or at least one intervention per school. Was it per district or school?
Per district.
I'll send this to you later. There's a bill that Representative Joe Pitts has that was requiring a much higher ratio. It has a fiscal note that actually reflected probably what you're spending, what you actually are spending.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is a, I mean, it's a nice way to appear to the public that we're, now we're going to fund RTI, but the reality is it's going to have a very small, limited impact in our district here in Knox County and probably for the rest of the folks that are in class as well. So, I mean, it's a start. We have to start somewhere, but I hope that, I certainly would like to see Representative Pitts' bill go forward. Thank you.
Well, just to give you an idea, Shelby County is always a rule of thumb. They have about 10% of the students in the state, so they'll get about 1.3 million dollars. They're spending tens of millions of dollars on RTI every year. So your, your ratio is going to be different, but it's probably similar.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Hill?
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate this very much. And I can't find it, but you had discussed a bill a few weeks ago that, Mr. DuPler, I don't know if you were aware of or not, about if the, if an LEA brings suit against the state as far as payment of fees on that, attorney fees.
That bill was introduced and quickly withdrawn last Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Representative Cassidy had filed that bill and he withdrew the bill.
Thank you. I'd also like to publicly say that Dr. Davis is on many of those calls with me too, so I appreciate you allowing him, Superintendent, to take that time.
Any other? Ms. Stafford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm asked through this question, but I'm going to ask it again for everybody to understand that in the past, we have been battling funding for pre-K being reduced because of a case, I guess, or something out of Vanderbilt, their study. Do you see that coming up and if that's going to be something that we're going to have to continue to value, to battle the fact that they're trying to take funding away from pre-K because they think it's not effective?
I don't, we don't think you will this year, 2018, but next year, it's really going to depend on who the governor is. Their program's going to be strong or go away depending on the governor's feeling about, about that.
So right now, we're not having to worry. They do understand the importance of it for this year, but with the governors, they're the ones now that's pushing to get rid of it. Those that are running for, taking heed of that, everybody's pre-K. Governors are trying to get rid of pre-K programs. So I just want to make sure that we're having to, not having to battle it right now.
It's one of those situations where there's legislation out there that could be put on notice at any moment and it could become a threat, but we're not seeing, we're not seeing that happening.
Okay. Thank you again for coming from middle Tennessee to brief us. And sorry we had the conflict with our board meeting, but thank you both again.
No, thank you.
We are both public school parents, so we appreciate getting to work in this arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I will refer to Ms. Hill and she will do the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I think you all know, I have a CTE school in my district, Lynton-Salway. And as I've gotten more and more familiar with it and what they offer, and my learning curve has gone straight up on what, what we are doing to prepare our kids for a career advancement. But we still have a long way to go. I had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Iswick and Dr. Wilson both about learning of the specific needs that we've got here and learning more about our industry partners. And what I asked, and I apologize, Dr. Wilson, I didn't get to you before this. I'm going to ask you or Dr. Iswick, whoever, okay, thank you, to come forward. And we, we got him involved with a industry partner meetings that are going on. And it's just incredible what is happening. I felt it was real important for the board to know about this and also for them to tell us what their needs are.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I haven't met many of you, so I do want to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Keith Wilson and I'm serving currently as the interim director of career and technical education for Knox County Schools. And tonight, actually not, not by myself, I'm going to ask two guests also to join us and you're going to hear from them as well. And that's Terry Self, who's the CEO of Interstate Mechanical Contractors. And he's here tonight representing the Plumbing, Heating and Cooling Contractors Association of Tennessee. And Chuck Schuman, who's the general manager of Shopper Mechanical Services. And he is here as a representative of Resource Valley Construction Training Council. Now, those two organizations, you may be familiar with. Knox County has been in partnership with the two of them, operating the adult apprenticeship programs for about the past 30 years. And currently, that's an, that's an apprenticeship program that's serving about 382 young men and women interested in careers and working in careers in the craft trades. And about 208 of those, almost 400 are from Knox County. So it's an opportunity for high school graduates, for young men and women to, to take that next step into the careers in these, in these fields. And so as Ms. Hill mentioned, we wanted to come tonight to sort of highlight what is our common interest, both in the industry side and in the public education sector, in, in having that partnership and why that's important to our, our work. Those that are enrolled in this program are able to receive technical training by attending night classes. They do so at Lincoln Park facility during the week. And then they work for these contractors during the day, earning a wage and also getting that practical on the, on the job training, earning hours towards becoming certified in those fields. How does that relate to us? I, I have been the interim director since November 20th, so I'm just hit my three-month anniversary. Do not come from a CTE background. So it has been a, a learning curve that has gone straight up for me as I've been working on that. But I have come to a few realizations in the short time that I've been in this role about why it's important to have these partnerships and why, why these things matter. And the first one is that I'll share with you that our CTE programming as a school system is going to be the strongest it can be when we're aligned to the, to the next step for students, whether that's post-secondary education, whether that's straight into career, or whether that's into advanced training like an apprenticeship program. And one way that we are doing that currently and will certainly be looking to continue to do that in the future is by making sure that we are aligned in terms of the types of certifications that we offer. So for example, we are doing, I think, a really good job and are very successful with using the National Center for Construction and Education Research, NCCER, using their certifications with our high school students. Our students that are enrolled in plumbing or in construction corps or in electrical can receive certifications in those areas, the same certifications they would receive as they enroll into these apprenticeship programs. They actually, if they're coming out of high school with those certifications, are walking into places like Pellicippi and TCATs and the apprenticeship program with net less work to do in terms of classwork. So it's already getting them in that main line to, to, to work in those fields if they're interested in doing that. And that's a real strong aspect of any CTE program is how can we align ourselves to that. So again, looking at something like the apprenticeship program, which we've been a part of, using those certifications and then us mimicking that at the classroom level as well, is a strong partnership and a strong link that we already have. Again, in my short time, the other realization that I've come to, and myself being a public education, I've, you know, I've spent a lot of time in school in my life. And coming from that and recognizing what a great need there is honestly in these fields and in these craft trades. Not only is there a great need, there's great opportunity for our students who are interested in careers in these areas. And it's, it's on us to, to convey that to students, what the real opportunities are for work in these fields. And then also to make sure that we're removing barriers to certain student populations who maybe aren't having access to, to programming in these areas. And so if you'll bear with me, I'll share a few statistics around that idea of the need that's out there. For every five people who are retiring from these trades, and you're going to hear more of this from them, I'm sure as well, there's only one being trained in apprenticeship programs currently. And the average age of a tradesman today is 43 years old. There will be a million craft professionals needed by 2020 in the United States. So these are real opportunities when you think about for our kids. The other side of that is the average, average salary around our country for an electrician is about $57,000 a year. For a welder, it's $70,000 a year. So again, thinking about myself coming out of college as a new teacher with a four-year degree, I wasn't making that kind of money. These are real opportunities for our students to have a career where they can provide for a family. They can, they can do what they need to do. Again, if they have the opportunity and if their, if awareness is built around these different career fields. And the last thing I would say is, and this really comes back to, to where Ms. Hill started, is around industry partnerships. When you think about a strong CTE program, you're going to have to have those partnerships. I have had the privilege in 17 years in Knox County to work around some great educators. But the truth is probably the expertise we need to be really strong in career and technical ed doesn't exist probably inside the walls of the AJ building. That's no offense to anybody. But in order for our CTE programming to be strong, it has to be tightly plugged in with those that are currently working in those areas. And so we're lucky, I think, in a lot of ways to have this as a, as an existing relationship that we can build upon to really inform our work and how we move forward. And so that was originally kind of the concept of why we, we came together and met earlier this month was to talk about what, what are those common things that we can benefit from and continuing this partnership and sustaining it, possibly expanding it. You know, what would be the benefit for all of us in doing that? And so we've got a plan coming up very soon for folks, some of the folks you're going to hear from tonight, to be able to spend a little time with our high school counselors in terms of building that awareness and, and so that they can have a clear sense around what career opportunities are there. And if we have students who are currently enrolled in some of those programs, what could that really mean for them in the future? What are the next steps, whether it's apprenticeship or whether it's two-year associate's degree or whether it's advanced training? You know, what, what is that going to look like for those kids? We also have a tentative lunch scheduled with our superintendent, again, to talk a little bit more about that relationship. And then obviously, this was one of our action items coming out of that was to come and speak to the board tonight to, to put some face time with, with what we're working on. So I wanted to minimize what you heard from me because I really wanted you to hear from our partners here in Mr. Self and Mr. Schuman. So I'll ask them if they don't mind to step up and, and share a few thoughts with you as well.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, Board Member Hill, thank you very much for this opportunity. Keith really painted a picture. I'd like to give you a little bit of background where we've been, where we are now, where we're headed in our relationship with Knox County Schools. The Knoxville Association of Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors apprenticeship program started in 1988, was founded by several contractors that wanted to provide education for students interested in the trades. PHCC apprenticeship program through those 30 years worked very closely with Knox County Schools. And during that 30 years of the program, the program has produced many individuals that have, that are now in key management roles with our respective businesses. In fact, our company, our chief operating officer is a graduate of this program. And even some of the graduates are building or, or business owners today. But really, that's where we've been in the past. That's in the rearview mirror. Where are we now? And I'd really like to expand on that. We're in a severe manpower shortage in our industry, in our trades. In fact, I'll give you a little feedback. We bid a large project two weeks ago, 28-month duration. And you know what the single largest risk in that project was? It wasn't the size or duration of the project. It was not the complexity of the project. It was not the effectiveness of the general contractor on the project. It was manpower to man the project for that duration. The number one problem, number one risk in that project. To my friends here at Knox County Schools, PHCC and Resource Valid, we need you. We need you more today than we ever have needed you. To be frank, we need each other. You have students and we have jobs. I don't know of any better relationship than that. PHCC has taken some steps in this manpower issue. In fact, one of our members, Mr. Gordy Noe with Pioneer Heating and Air, developed a program called Ride and Decide. And many of you have heard of it. Maybe you have not, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about that program. The, the main concept of the program is to pair students with trade contractors, which would allow the students to work in the summer and be paid while they are exposed to the trades. And, and basically, the program is set up in two four-week sessions in the summer, one in June and one in July. And in essence, that student would work for two different companies during those two sessions. Students must be 16. And in fact, we've recently had some graduated, some students that had graduated come back into the Ride and Decide program so they could be exposed to the trades. Our, our target is rising juniors. And rising juniors, think about this, they can work the summer of their junior year. That'd be two opportunities. They can work the summer of their senior year, be four opportunities, work possibly with four different companies in the trades. And that's great exposure for our industry and great exposure for the students. And they're getting paid as, as they're going through this process. The mission of the program is through the high schools and administrators to encourage students that maybe don't know what they want to do after graduation to be part of the trades. To educate the students and their parents of the benefits of working in our industry. Competitive wages. Get paid while you train. Almost zero, zero in education costs, in education fees compared to what the expensive going through a four-year college degree and those dreaded student loans. There will always be jobs in plumbing, heating and cooling. Expanded opportunities for career advancement, as I shared, some individuals in our company or, or managers in our business that have graduated from this program and the ability to, to own your own business as an entrepreneur through this, this program. The Ride and Decide program is three years old. We've had 123 students participate in the program. To date, 13 students have worked full-time after graduation from this program. Knox County Schools has been a big part of this program and the majority of the students in the Ride and Decide program are from Knox County Schools. But I think we would agree, out of 60,000 students, 123 is not enough. So what if, what if we work together, Knox County Schools, the Ride and Decide program, rolled up our sleeves and worked together to promote this program? This program can easily be rolled out nationwide. Wouldn't it be great for Knox County Schools to have this fingerprint on this program that could be a national program? While we are very excited about the Ride and Decide program with Knox County Schools, we want to do more. And based on our recent meetings with Keith and our upcoming meeting with the superintendent and upcoming meetings with school counselors, we can all see that the relationship with Knox County Schools is, is expanding. Knox County Schools is, is expanding. And it, and we're just really pumped up. So I have, I have two asks of you. And looking ahead for the potential growth of P, from PHCC and Resource Valley, there'll be a need to increase classroom space and space to allow for more hands-on training for our programs. Both programs are presently meeting at Lincoln Park Elementary. Lincoln Park's a very functional facility for us, but we would love for a consideration of this board to, uh, provide additional spacing along with Lincoln Park that, uh, for expanded growth of our program and for training. So ask number one, more space. Ask number two, the important role for Knox County Schools is playing in helping our students find career possibilities in the trade with PHCC and Resource Valley is critical for our future. My second ask, that the Knox County School Board will continue to effectively fund the career and technical education program, not only today, but for the future. And I hope you can see that PHCC and Resource Valley is very excited about the renewed relationship with Knox County Schools, with Keith Wilson and the staff of the career and technical education. Our past partnership with the apprenticeship program has been very beneficial both to the students, community and to our local businesses. We hope that this will continue. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Chuck Schuman. I'm the president of Resource Valley Construction Training Council. Uh, we've had a relationship with Knox County Schools since the late eighties. Uh, when we started our program, we actually started our classes in Kwanzaa Hudson, the corner of Fulton County School, Fulton County High School's property. If y'all remember those old buildings that used to, used to be over there. So, uh, I've been president now for about eight years. I've been involved with the program for probably fifteen or twenty years. Um, I've got a real, I've got a great passion for this program. I've seen a lot of young students actually come out of the, uh, schools here locally, come into our program and actually work for us now, making very good liv- living for them and their families. Um, it, it works, it, it does a real good job. It works very well and we really want to continue to keep it going. I put together a list of things that I feel, and I don't want to repeat a lot of stuff. Terry did a good job of explaining it all, so I don't want to be, uh, respectful of your time. Uh, it provides a career path for young adults that can't or don't go to college, usually lower low cost to the apprentice and provides an avenue for making an income while going through school. It'll fill a gap due to the aging workforce and increased need for skilled tradespeople. As Terry said earlier, I think the average tradesperson in the field now is forty-three. It's getting older. They're all retiring off and there's a big need. Uh, if anybody's been over to Nashville lately and you know what a tower crane is, there's over a hundred of them in the air over there right now. You know, it's a fourth growing economy, I think, in the country. Well, that, that's a lot of construction and that may not mean a lot to you. It means a lot to me. I understand what's going on. And there's not anybody to do that work. Those people over there are jumping one contractor to another for two and three and four dollars more than the hour because there's not enough of them to go around. So there's a huge need for construction people. It, the, the apprenticeship program also ensures that we continue to have a skilled workforce. I, i- in our arena, it's very important that everybody we put on the job is skilled, not only in the, what they do is, is an industry professional, but also safety. And we provide them with all the training and everything necess- necessary to make sure they're not only are skilled, but they also work safe. Uh, as Terry mentioned, we need to sustain our program and with your help, maybe we can possibly grow our program. There's a lot of young adults coming out of high school now that maybe can't go to college like they may want to. And we can offer an avenue to them where they can do, uh, like Terry said, they can have a, a good education, they can learn a skill. I know a lot of people that actually went and business themselves and have been very successful and never had a college education. So that's all possible if they want to, uh, apply themselves. Uh, the relationship with public education is very important, like Terry said. It gives us the ability to work with y'all and offer that additional avenue to any of your young adults coming out of school. Um, we can all, we can expose them to the opportunity through the apprenticeship program. Y'all may not be aware of this, but I'm not sure that Terry mentioned this, but the, the state actually has a program they've put forth called the Go Build Program. Have y'all heard of that? Where they actually have some excess funds at the state level in the building department. They understood the need for skilled tradespeople. So they've actually taken those excess funds and they've got a campaign going. You'll see billboard signs, it's called Go Build. You'll see billboard signs, TV advertising, and that's all being paid for by the state. They've done this program in Mississippi and Alabama with great success and it's trying to make the young adults aware of the trades that are out there and the availability of having them for them to turn to in case they, uh, don't go to secondary education. I wanted to thank you all for, for allowing us to have this time to speak to you. And I don't know, do we want to take any questions now, Keith, if they had any? Do y'all have any questions you have with Terry?
I think Ms. Dethridge did. Yes. And Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Um, when I was in Nashville, I did hear about that Go Build. And they were saying that it's, they have money, but the evidently the districts don't know about it because there're not a lot of people asking for it. They give scholarship money and all type of things. So I did come back and mention that to the superintendent and we were going to look into that. So I guess we need to get on it. But anyway, um, the night school at Nekon Park, is that basically, um, and we got our two-hundred-and-eight students? Is that, are we, am I confusing that, that during the night schools?
Yes.
Two-hundred-and-eight during the night?
Well, actually, there's more than that because, uh, PHCC holds their class nights different than Resource Valley.
Okay.
So we use the same facility. So we'll have two-hundred-and-eight students there when we have the electrical class. Uh, during the other nights, combined between PCC and Resource Valley, we've got three-hundred-and-sixty? Is that it total?
I think the, the number I shared with you was three-hundred-and-eighty-two for both programs. And those are, those are graduated, um, adult, that's an adult apprenticeship program. So when I say two-hundred-and-eight of those that are currently enrolled, those are from Knox County proper, uh, that are participating in that program currently.
Um, I know, um, we also have the program at Bauton-Salway. That's for during the day, right?
Sure. So, so we're talking about, again, we have programming during the day that is for Knox County High School students. And then what we're talking about with the apprenticeship program is students who have, who have left us, who have graduated and moved on. This is a next step. It would be advanced training post-secondary, uh, after graduation.
Okay. Uh, I would just say removing barriers. I know that, um, in one of my schools, we have cut CTE so bad. And so we don't even have maintenance and building and that type of thing in the school at all.
Yeah.
So I know our kids in my district will really appreciate the opportunity. And when you say expanding at Lincoln Park, it'd be nice if we could bring it closer to the community somewhere for our kids that don't have transportation and may not be able to get there. They would have the same opportunity, but it has to bring it over to, closer to them. Like, we have different things going on, but we always say, come to us, but sometimes we might need to come to them.
Yeah.
And give them the same opportunities and opportunity to, uh, learn this pro, more about this program. I, I heard about the program also at a meeting we had in East Knoxville about the Ride and Decide program. It sounds great. Now, um, I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure that our kids that, um, know about it. I don't know if the principals are learning about it, they know about it, and the kids are getting opportunity to, to, uh, to join in the effort. So I, I just think that I love the program. I've heard about it several times and I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure the kids in, um, my district get the opportunity to participate because I think we're losing out on the ob- there's a lot of kids that don't have the opportunity to even learn those skills. And, and you're right, it'd be a great opportunity for economic development and give back. And so I wish we could figure out how to bring it, make, expand it.
I think that's, that's part of the, you know, kind of crucial next steps is, is time with our counselors, who are very busy folks. I mean, but, but, but you know, there's, there's a difference. Somebody said in a, in a, in a state training we was in last week, there's a difference between counseling and advisement. And advisement can come from lots of different folks, whether that's administrators or teachers in the classroom. And so as much as you can build that awareness for students, uh, around, again, what are the possibilities and what are the? That doesn't necessarily have to fall to one person or one group of people. We, we just need to do a better job of making sure that that information's out there.
Well, my, yeah, because I remember, um, the previous superintendent was saying something about looking at even a place closer downtown for, uh, facility to kind of bring that closer to, of people in the, in the, not on east, but north or whatever, just bring a little bit closer to the, the center city of Knoxville so that people and kids could be able to have a better opportunity to, to participate. But I, I think it's great and I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure we all get a chance to, to participate. Thank you guys for bringing this.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Um, this is, I hear what you're saying and if we can't find a location, we at least need to figure out transportation. I mean, you know, it, transportation is probably cheaper than a building, but if there are people who want to do it and we've got the facilities, we got to at least figure that out. My, my question was really for the superintendent or somebody from, uh, the, the school system as well. I know you're looking, you said people primarily rising juniors.
For the Ride and Decide?
Right.
Yes.
If they don't find out about it till then, that's too late. I mean, one of the things that I think is becoming evident more and more is that kids start thinking about in ninth grade, even in middle school, what their options are. And I would just challenge the superintendent to make sure that this conversation starts happening in middle school. Um, because I'll, if, if kids don't hear before high school that this is an option, they think it's post-secondary or college or nothing else. And so I would just encourage us to promote this as much as we promote any other type of opportunity for our, our kids because I just remember with my own children, if you didn't learn about it till you were about a junior, it was too late because you might have planned some things differently had you known about it earlier. So that was, my only comment was really to challenge the school district to make a much more concerted effort to let kids know about this eighth grade, ninth grade, so we can increase the attendance. Because as a former real estate lender, I know exactly what you're talking about with contractors. That was the biggest risk of finishing a job is not having the, the labor to, to, to finish on time and get those early bonuses if you finish it ahead of schedule.
Ms. Kent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to concur with what, um, Ms. Fugit said. I, I really think that this is extremely an important opportunity for students. And honestly, I did not even know that these were a thing. And, um, obviously, I'm a very big proponent of opportunity for students. I mean, through the OB program, we fought for that. We've, um, I've definitely been very, um, I, I think that's extremely important because not everybody has the same pathway to what they want to do with their lives. And I know that that's really, um, a misconception, especially for high schoolers, that there's one way and it's college or it's going to, um, do two years and get a degree. But not always. Like, my sister is, um, just got, um, a certification in construction from, um, one of her classes and that makes her want to go and be in, in construction. But if she hadn't had that opportunity, like I don't have those opportunities, um, she wouldn't have known that that existed. And so I think that it's extremely important that we continue to make, um, students aware of these opportunities. Um, and it, it's really funny that we've come and talked about this now because I, um, I was speaking to the colleges that I was going to and they asked me about what, what I thought about preparing students for, um, technical jobs. And I obviously am not taking, um, that track, but I, I, it made me realize how dire, um, those professions are and how important it is for us to be preparing everybody for that. Because even though that's not my path, colleges are asking me what I think about it. And so like, um, it's, it's very important and very vital. And I, I think that it's overlooked a lot of times by students and I don't think it should be. So I would love to, um, be a part of helping, um, raise awareness about this to students. I've got about fifteen of them across every high school that I can contact, um, as, whenever you need it. And so I think that we can utilize these student connections and connections throughout the school to just really show people their options because if they don't know about them, we can't grow. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
Um, I want to make a distinction so that folks aren't confused, since we're talking about a large umbrella here. And gentlemen, if any of you, and Buck also, if you will correct me if I go off the wrong direction, um, we have our CTE programs. Then we have our programs for adult apprentices. So when we're talking about transportation, these are adults who are traveling to a job during the day, working all day, and then in classwork at night. So, um, that, that's going to be, if we're looking at that kind of transportation, that's a much larger issue. So I want to be sure that we're, right, I want to be sure that we understand that we're really talking about two different things. So when they are talking about expanding space, this is space that they are basically renting, leasing from us. So they are looking for more space for their programs for those adult apprentices in the evenings. So that's, that's the space issue we're looking at. So I want to be sure there's a distinction there between our high school CTE program and our adult, um, apprentice programs that we're talking about. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think it's, you know, thank you for highlighting the, our need for further training for our students and some of the things that are available. And I think that, you know, what, a lot of what's been said already, that, you know, this should be a path that is just presented all along the way. You know, perhaps in middle school, like, like Ms. Fugit said, you know, we can take some time away from, um, maybe some of our test prep time and use it to, to dream a little bit about.
Just add it to career fairs.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot, a lot of different ways you can do it. But I think we need to, um, we need to kind of get our students' juices flowing early on about what some of the possibilities are. Most kids have such a very small vision of what is even available. So I think we definitely have an opportunity really in, in those middle years to prepare students. Because as we know, when you get to eighth grade, you're deciding, you know, what your path is going to be in high school. So it really has to happen in those middle years. And, um, so, you know, there's a lot of students that if they understood this was available, you know, they could move right into exactly what they are going to want to do. That, that could really open up windows for them and, and certainly fill the need that is already there. So thank you for being here and, um, I appreciate more conversation or look forward to it. Thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Fugit, I believe you were first. Thank you. I'm just following up on what Ms. Owen said. I, I, I did understand that the space you were talking about was for the adult program. My only response is, do you know of some space we have available you would like? Um, I, I just, that's a question. You don't have to tell it now, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's one thing to ask for space. Where is the space? And to Ms. Dethridge's point, is there space available in another part of the county? Would you need? How would that impact your ability to deliver the program? Because I assume you're going to need more equipment, all that kind of stuff.
So, so I don't have all the answers for the, you know, the, the detail on that. But part of what we've been talking about kind of internally, and this, it's multifaceted in that, you know, you're talking about providing programming during the day that requires a position and requires an instructor and, and those sorts of things. And there's certainly opportunities for partnerships out there, uh, with our TCATs and with folks like that to be able to, uh, supplement some of that. It's really exploring all those options for, um, again, when you think mutual benefit, you're, you're creating programs during the day, maybe in some places you didn't have them. And what that's also doing is creating space and opportunity at night for the expansion of those, um, those apprenticeship programs. So that's certainly things that we're looking at is how do we enrich our programming during the day? You know, what resources do we have available to do that? And then creating opportunity for expansion.
So if we did it in a high school and then opened that high school at night?
Yes.
For something else, perhaps moving it around the county? I, I just didn't know if you were coming with a, a proposal by budget time or if this was just to get us thinking?
I think when we think about short-term, uh, short-term is, is what you just described. It's, it's an expansion of, of existing programming or maybe adding additional equipment in some places to where it, it becomes functional for that. Um, long-term might be bigger and bigger budget ask to think about what the, what the real possibilities would be. Um, and again, I've been three months, so I haven't, I haven't fleshed all that out, you know?
You don't? Not in ninety days?
Ms. Hill.
Uh, you, you've done a good job, Keith, in your short tenure. Uh, what really has impacted me and, and, uh, when I'm finished, I'd like the others that are here to please just stand and introduce themselves. Because as I got to, to understand this better, and in full disclosure, Terry Self is a very close personal friend of mine, but recognizing that, I mean, just the two men standing up here are, are, are two of our largest mechanical contractors in our city. And I know the others that will introduce themselves. I mean, these people collectively employ thousands and, and they're at our doorstep[1795.28] people collectively employ thousands. And, and they're at our doorstep saying, help us. We've got to, we've got to, uh, to get more, more people in the trades. And, um, the, the timing is, is ripe, the jobs are there. So let's, uh, let's embrace this and do whatever we can. There is a breakdown, as we've talked about, there is a breakdown in the linkage between our middle and high school kids and then going into the building trades. We're not getting the word out that, that these jobs are there, what, what's involved, and how really seamless the training can be. So would, would you care to, um, introduce yourselves? Say no. Thank you.
I'm Donna Johnston with Inger Plum.
David Smith and Joshua Yelly.
Okay.
They're trained for carpenters and masons and as a, as part of research.
Thank you. So you, you all see these, all these names on billboards all the time at our construction sites. So, um, thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. DeTherje, did you want?
Just, go ahead. Just one more question. Because I, I was listening, you're talking about adult program at night for, uh, and I guess I'm trying to figure out, how are kids getting exposure and experience during the day?
So again, there's another, uh, you know, multifaceted, uh, problem that you have to figure out. So that's been some of the challenge, especially in these trades, is that, um, unlike other fields, so for comparison, health science and, and students that maybe study nursing or something like that, we have clinical agreements. They go out and work in different facilities and are exposed to, to that, um, field through those. And, um, that's a little challenging when you start to talk about contractors because of safety and insurance and liability and the age of the student. Um, so what we've been doing, uh, in terms of like practicum experiences for like our construction trades by and large, if you're familiar with like the cabins that we build, uh, some of the high schools and we, we sell, they're actually getting practicum experience during the day, uh, through those projects. Um, so it's really kind of true construction of a product that's up to code, built from blueprints, that goes for auction. Um, that's how they're getting that practicum experience right now. That's another avenue to explore. I mean, again, when we think about challenges and we think about, um, barriers that maybe, um, are preventing more authentic experiences for students, that's a place to, to dig in because certainly that should be the goal of all of our CTE programming is to get as close to the industry as possible for the students that are, that are pursuing that path.
So gentlemen, when they don't get it in high school, when they come at night, you start with those that don't know anything and you teach them the trade? Is that basically what happens? Okay.
We're, uh, both of our programs are registered with the Department of Labor. And so we have standards that they set forth that we have to apply by.
Okay.
And, uh, part of that standard is they have to have 2,000 hours each year working in the field and the trade that they're going to school for, as well as the class time.
Okay, so we just make sure we get the word out. So that way kids will know that if you don't get it in high school, it's not too late. You can go to these different programs.
And so when they complete the program and go through all four years, it's a four-year program, whether it be the electrical, the carpentry, or, or HVAC, the mechanical, uh, principals, they actually get a certificate with Department of Labor, recognizing them as completing your four-year apprenticeship school in whatever principal they've finished.
Good, thank you.
So we like to tell them it's like having a driver's license. They can take that anywhere in the country to prove that they're trained in what they're trained in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I don't see any other questions. And Ms. Hill, thank you for bringing this to the board's attention. I think it's been very informative and beneficial. So thank you all very much. And thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our report on Project Grad. And for that, I'll refer to Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as we were talking last spring, I guess before I took this job too, we talked about program evaluation and looking at, at our various programs, knowing that, uh, uh, budget issues would be on the horizon. Um, and we just want to be sure that, uh, that we take a look at every, every one of our programs and, and the value that our, that they bring to, to our school dr- district and the cost that's involved in those programs. So Mr. Rutter, uh, here from our research and evaluation accountability department has a, uh, the program evaluation. And at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Steve.
Thank you. My name is Steve Rutter. I'm a analyst on the REA team here in Knox County Schools. And this summer, um, Mr. Thomas asked me to conduct a program evaluation of Project Grad specifically around the stated goals of the program, which are to increase high school graduation rate, increase post-secondary enrollment, and to increase post-secondary completion. So Knox County Schools has been a longtime partner of Project Grad. Our partnership began back, way back in 2001. And at the time, it was implemented in 14 schools that were then known as the empowerment zone. Project Grad still operates in those 14 schools today, and those include 10 elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. Project Grad also currently has 15 full-time school-based employees that are, that are, um, assigned to very different schools. There are two at elementary school level. Um, they are assigned at Bell Morris and Spring Hill. There's one at the middle school level, assigned to Whittle Springs, 10 at the high school level, five people each at Austin East and Fulton High School. And then there's two people who are assigned to multiple schools and they kind of work the feeder pattern of Austin East and Fulton High Schools. So the, the overall mission of Project Grad is to increase educational attainment and provide support for disadvantaged students from kindergarten through post-secondary completion. So some of the activities that they engage in, in Knox County Schools to support that mission, um, are listed on this slide. And at, so at the elementary and middle school levels, some of the kinds of things that they do are, they conduct career days, they arrange college visits for groups of students, and they have parent education nights, they provide, uh, direct student support, especially at those schools where they have full-time personnel. And there are some mentoring activities that take place. At the high school level, they provide students with, um, college selection assistance and application assistance. They provide financial aid, uh, help for students along with, um, navigating the FAFSA process. And, um, they also conduct summer institutes that are, um, one to three weeks long during the summer. And they are conducted at post-secondary institutions and are intended to give students a taste of what college is like before actually enrolling in a post-secondary school. So they also help with coordination of external resources. And by that, I mean, if there are other agencies out there that provide similar kinds of services, they make sure that there's not duplication of efforts going on inside the school. They provide academic monitoring and counseling to students. And then they also have scholarship awards for qualifying graduates at the end of the high school experience. So, um, they also, they also provide some supports to their, um, students in the post-secondary realm and in terms of college and career counseling and things like that. So last year, um, Project Grad schools served about 7,000 students across Knox County. Eighty-six percent of those are, were classified as economically at risk. Those schools where they operate also have higher proportions of English language learners and students with disabilities. And you can see by the table included on this, they're also a lot more ethically diverse than our non-Project Grad schools. So if we're, if we're wondering if they're, they're reaching the, uh, most at-risk population in our school, they probably are. So I, I, my, my study, um, included four research questions, and I kind of took a two-pronged approach at this because there's a lot of things that Project Grad does that, um, reaches the whole school. So I was interested to see if those things had an effect on the students in those schools. And so I looked for school-wide effects for, um, on high school graduation and post-secondary enrollment. And then I also took a look at a subset of students within, uh, our Project Grad high schools, known as the Project Grad Scholars. So these are, these are, um, I didn't look at high school graduation for that group just because kind of by definition, they are high school graduates. Because these are the students who are eligible for the scholarship. So I did look at, um, the effect that the scholar programming had on post-secondary enrollment and post-secondary completion. So just, this slide is just intended to give you an idea of what, what's going on in terms of graduation rate over the past, um, eight, eight or so years in, in the school district. So it's, it's kind of tough to see up there, but that top line, the black line, is the graduation rate trend for Knox County Schools as a whole. So you can see from 2010 to last, the end of last school year, it's been a, some sort of gently positive trend across the school district over that period of time. So the, the middle line that's, it's green in color, that, that's Fulton High School. And so you can see it, the graduation rate trend there has been fairly flat, maybe a little bit negative, but it's mostly flat. And then the orange line is the overall graduation rate trend at Austin East High School. And you can see that it, it's had, it's had, experienced a negative trend over the last eight or so years. So, but we know, um, we know there's lots of factors that go into, uh, the academic success of students. So in my study, um, I built, I tried to account for some of those things that we know especially impact, um, high school graduation, based on our past research and, and things that we've seen in the past. Um, so I built a regression model that controlled for incoming achievement, ethnicity, economic status, gender, and the cohort year in which the students graduated from high school. And so when I looked at high school graduation, what, for the, um, incoming achievement, just so you know, I used the eighth grade TCAP, reading, language, arts, and math, um, scores. And so I used those two things because that was kind of the last academic data point we had before they entered high school. So once I built out the model and, um, once I built out the model and included all those control variables, what I found was that the Project Grad, um, the students who attended Project Grad Schools were not significantly more likely to graduate to high school than students at non-grad high schools, even after controlling for all those variables. So I, I would like to pause for just a second and, and say that, um, I did a lot of post-hoc work with a gentleman that the, uh, Project Grad put me in touch with. His name's Dr. Rob Olson, and he's a research professor at George Washington University. So he took a look at my technical report and he had several questions, one of which, uh, involved this. And so one of his concerns was that even though we made a, our best effort to control for all these, uh, factors that we know influence academic achievement, that maybe we didn't get all of them. He was specifically concerned with, um, school-related effects. So, so I did a lot of post-hoc work with him. And we, we used the guidelines that are set forth by the What Works Clearing House to, uh, make adjustments in these kinds of situations. And so if you're not familiar, the What Works Clearing House is a repository of educational research. And, um, so, so they have guidelines to, to make post-hoc corrections in these kinds of cases. So when we did that for schools, what, what I found was there was, there was no difference in the funding, right? So the variation between schools was very, very small. It was about 4% of the overall variation. Um, and so it didn't, there wasn't nothing there that I felt warranted changing the funding here. So on the second, my second research question, we looked at post-secondary enrollment for these, uh, school-wide effects. And in this case, I used ACT composite as the incoming achievement because that's sort of the last data point that we have when students grad- leave high school. And so a- again, um, what I, what I found here were that graduates from Project Grad Schools, um, weren't significantly more likely to enroll in post-secondary programs than students from non-Project Grad Schools. So you might notice that the P-value here is below what a lot of people call statistically significant, right? Which is .05. So, um, the reason why that I say, that I said it's not is because we conduct a power analysis, and that's based on a number of variables. It's based on what kinds of statistical error you're willing to make, how much data you have, and what kind of a minimum effect size you're looking for. And so, so after doing that, the threshold for significance that we set in our, and it's kind of a common practice in our office, um, is, was far, far below .01. So I, I can, I can honestly see an argument that this is, that you could call this statistically significant. And so what I, that's the reason I put the effect, estimated effect size down there. So essentially, the effect size is about an additional three out of every 100 Project Grad graduates enrolled in post-secondary due to program effects. So I, I'll let you all kind of decide whether that's large enough to be significant or not. Um, so. Three out of, it's about 3%, three out of every 100, yeah. So when I looked at the, so the next part of my study dealt with, specifically with the Project Grad Scholars. And just so you know, if you're not familiar with those students, these are the students who are eligible for the, um, Project Grad scholarships. And these are, these are students who attend the summer institutes. They receive, um, more, kind of more regular academic and post-secondary coaching than some of the other students, and they self-select to be a part of this. So, um, so when I looked at them, I used a little bit different methodology. I employed, um, a matched pairs design where I used something called propensity score matching to match students based on GPA, all those things listed, GPA, ACT composite, ethnicity, economic status, and the cohort year. So that what you end up with is your participant group and a control group that looks very similar in terms of all those covariates. Yes?
Steve, but your matched pairs were at other schools in the district, correct?
Yes, yes. I, there was no control for school there, yeah.
Did you do, did you do any comparative analysis between the PGK scholars and then just their home schools? Did you analyze that at all?
The issue, the issue with that is, I did not. And the issue with that is because, um, there are, there are no, these students are kind of unique and all, on, across these covariates. So there aren't enough, there weren't enough good matches to compare.
So you couldn't get enough matched pairs then to do the analysis?
Inside the same school.
Inside the same school, okay. Thank you.
So, um, so when, the first thing we looked at was post-secondary enrollment. So you can, if you look at this table, the column on the far right, 767 of the 910 Project Grad Scholars enrolled in post-secondary programs compared to 698 for the control group. So you can see that the Project Grad Scholars are enrolling in post-secondary programs more often than students that are similar to them. And it turns out that that difference is statistically significant by anybody's measure of statistical significance. So, um, so that I believe is a positive finding for the program. Then, um, so I, I used the same control and treatment groups to look at, this really wasn't a research question, but I was just, I was kind of curious to see what kinds of institutions that these students were enrolling in. So you can see, again, Project Grad Scholars are enrolling more often, and they're enrolling in four-year programs more often than the control groups. And so, um, there, so there, there, that, I think that's a positive finding, but that's a difference also. Um, so for the last part of this, what we looked at was post-secondary completion. So, so if you looked on the right-hand column again, so there was 121 Project Grad Scholars completed their post-secondary program compared to 181s, uh, of the control group. And this is in the, in the same time period. So I was concerned, and Dr. Olson shared this concern with me, that there may be, uh, timing-related effects built in here. So in other words, if, uh, Project Grad Scholars were enrolling in four-year universities more often than the control group, obviously they need more time to finish their post-secondary studies, right? So, so to kind of address that, and I included it on an appendix slide to this, is I looked at dropout rates for the post-secondary dropout rates. And so there are seven cohorts of students included in these, in these students. And in six out of seven cohort, the dropout rate for Project Grad Scholar Group was higher than the dropout rate for the control group. So that to me kind of indicated that timing wasn't as big an issue as I had feared it might be. Yes?
Were you able to disaggregate from the, um, for the dropout rate from the controls and then the scholars? Were you able to divide that out by the two-year and four-year degree seekers or not?
I probably, I probably can. I didn't, I, I, I divided it out by cohort year.
Okay, yeah, I see that it was by cohort year.
Yeah.
I was just curious to see if the dropout rate was, um, less than the two-year program versus the four-year.
I can, I can probably do that and get it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, my question is, Madam Chair, if you indulge me, is that you said that the post-secondary enrollment was not significant, but then down here you showed where it was significant because you have a lot more enrolled than you do this non, so.
Um, so these, these, these are a subset of students, right? That, these are Project Grad Scholars, whereas the first, this on, I don't remember what number slide that was, but on that first slide where we showed results, that was.
Just school-wide?
School-wide, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure that, uh, it showed where at least you have more Project Grad Scholars going to, going to college.
That is true, yes.
And a lot of them are dropping out because of different, various reasons.
Yeah, that, that was a little bit beyond the scope of, like what I, my work.
Right, because you have a smaller subset in Project Grad than you do in the overall pri- uh, school district as a whole. So it makes a difference. It's the number makes a difference.
Yes, yeah, for certain. So, just to sum up, so I didn't find any evidence that attend, just attending a project grad high school increased the likelihood of high school graduation. And there, depending on how you interpret statistical significance, there's probably a little bit of evidence that attending a project grad high school increased likelihood of enrollment and post-secondary programming. Then, we did find, we found pretty good evidence that participation in the project grad scholar program increased the likelihood of post-secondary enrollment, and that they were enrolling in four-year programs more often. And then, lastly, we didn't find any evidence that project grad scholars were more likely to complete their post-secondary programming, given the same amount of time as similar students.
Okay.
Ms. Decker, do you have another question?
I did. But I know Amber had one before.
I just, I didn't know if you could tell me off the top of your head, Steve, the percentage of students that have been project grad scholars that...
I, I don't know percentage, but on average, there were 135 per year for the last seven years, so.
From both high schools?
Yeah, from both high schools, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and, and I'll just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but like, and just to be clear, the, there were, there was about 910 included in my study because some of the students didn't have complete data. So, that, that comes out to be 130 students a year, I think, so, yeah.
I would like to, yeah, I think the, the information is interesting. If you would indulge me, I would like to have Roddy Chandler, if you could, Executive Director of Project Grad, come up, because some of these, they're, they are what they are.
Yeah.
But there is a reason for some of that, and I think she can best tell that side of the story.
Okay, yeah.
That's okay.
She's on the...
But she's not, it might, that's something else. I'm talking about project grad.
On public forum.
Are you talking about project grad?
Yeah.
I'm talking about project grad.
She's on the public forum, signed up for.
But is she talking about project grad?
Yes, we have seven.
But can I ask a question?
But can I?
If she, if she's on public forum, she only gets five minutes as opposed to a school board member asking her some questions. That's, that's the only thing.
Can I not, and have her come and ask some questions for me, please?
It's fine with me if it's fine with the board.
Is that all right with the board? I mean, he gave his report, and I'm just wanting her to explain some...
She has questions, I guess.
I, I have no objections to that at all. I just wanted to ask Steve a question. The 130 roughly per year, and that, that's Fulton and AE?
Fulton and AE, yeah.
And that's 130 out of a total of how many?
I can tell you what, like, there were two, 289 graduates from those two schools last year. So, that might give you an idea of what percentage that is.
So, this 130 per year, is, is that just seniors you're talking about?
It's, yeah, graduates, yes.
Oh, graduates.
Yeah, graduate, that, that 130 would be graduates who participated in the project grad scholar program while they were in high school.
While they were in high school?
Yeah, right.
All four years?
That, I, I'm not completely sure. I got the list from project grad, so, they didn't have any participation information in there. And I, to be fair, I didn't ask for it, so.
So, what I'm trying to get at is, so what is the percentage of students in these schools that, that even participated and took advantage of these, of this program?
I don't know that for sure. That might be a better question for project grad.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Owen, your question is for Mr. Rutter?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at, at your study of graduation rates, and I'm wondering why we started at 2009 instead of starting from 2001?
Well, because there was a, if you, if you look at the, the graduation rates over that length of time, there was a policy change, and right there, would that really change the game in terms of graduation rate? And so, since, since that 2009 year, it's been fairly consistent. So, that's why we, I chose that, that date to...
Okay, so do we have the data from 2001 to 2009? If we wanted to look at that separately?
I don't, I can get it to you. I have it, yeah, I have it in my office, yeah, I can send it to you.
So, maybe we could see that one, and then this one, instead of trying to look at it over time with that break?
Right, yeah, just, just know that the policy changes mean that...
Right.
The graduation is, graduation rate's different because of the, the rules involved.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
One other thing I, I thought of, Steve, and I don't know if you controlled for this in your analysis, but because Fulton and AE are both magnet schools, did you control for that variable if this, if the student was a magnet student?
I did not, no, I did not.
Mary, it's funny, they're not magnet schools, they're magnet programs.
Sorry, magnet programs. But did you control for any transfer students, students that had transferred in?
It, no, I did not. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how I would do that.
Okay, Ms. Decker, Ms. Owen, do you have another question for Mr. Rutter before?
Yeah.
When, when you looked at the similarities to get your control group, can you tell us what the similarities were that you used?
Well, it, it was listed on this slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
It were those things right there, their high school GPA, ACT composite score, their ethnicity, the economic, their economic status, and their cohort year.
And how is economic disability status determined during that time?
It's, it's determined, it was determined for that period of time, it was determined as anybody who was directly certified for your, and for your reduced lunch, or there was a period of time where it, we used a household survey because of the CEP program. So, anybody who qualified for free lunch, met a certain level on the CEP household survey, or was directly certified.
So, they had to self-select for those, right?
That's always been the case, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Decker, did you have a question for Mr. Rutter, or were you just, had your mind down for Ms. Chandler?
Ms. Chandler, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sieg, go ahead.
Thank you, I have one more question. Can you tell me what the policy change was?
I, I don't know, I'll have to go back and look. It, and a lot of it had to do with, I believe, I'm, I'm kind of speaking out of turn, but it had to do with the, I think the rea, maybe like NCLB and the reauthorization of that.
Perhaps Ms. Chandler can answer that for us then, if she, maybe she'll know what the policy change was.
Okay, Mr. Rutter, Ms., we have one more question from Ms. Roundtree, and then we'll have Ms. Chandler come up.
So, are you able to go back and reanalyze that? Because I'm just looking at the data that Daphne provided at the end of the school year, just from, from this year, past year as an example, that, so there were 103 magnet students at Fulton, and then there were 52 at AE, so, I mean, is that something you'd be able to?
Possibly.
Okay.
Possibly.
If you can, it's no big deal. I think that might...
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be non-committal, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chandler? Ms. Roundtree wanted to address...
Just because, hi, Ms. Chandler, how are you? We have quite a few other people sign up to speak to project grad, so we're, all of those are not going to speak at this time. I just wanted to make that clear to everyone in the audience that's here to speak about that issue. We're gonna allow Ms. Chandler to speak as the director.
Right, she's not speaking for that, yeah, she's answering some questions that he couldn't...
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for our other speakers.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Ms. Chandler, can you do me a favor and explain some of the disparities of what he was talking about in his report? Because where we came from in 2001 to where you are now, and I want to disclose also that I am on the board of the project grad, so.
Okay, thank you. My remarks now are related to the, the evaluation, and when I speak at public forum, it's Rodney Chandler, Public Citizen, who's gonna be talking. First, let me just tell you that Steve Rutter has been professional and helpful and collaborative, and we just don't agree on this, but I have great respect and appreciation for Steve, so I want, want you to know that. When the REA preliminary report and final report were shared with us in October, we found the report was misleading as to the effectiveness of project grad. Concern was shared by the board, by the, by grad regarding the analysis, and by mutual agreement between the grad board and Knox County Schools leadership on October 16th, a third-party evaluator acceptable to both project grad and KCS Research was identified to review the REA analysis and report. And that third-party evaluator was independent researcher, Dr. Robert Olson, the president of Rob Olson LLC and research professor at George Washington University. Dr. Olson has a PhD from Cornell, 20 years of experience designing and conducting impact evaluations and designing evidence standards in a wide range of policy areas, including education, training, nutrition, housing, pregnancy prevention, welfare, charter schools, college advisory, and smartphone apps. In fact, the KCS Research Department indicated they had done some grant work with Dr. Olson in the past, so certainly, there is great validity in the independent study. Most notably, the reports diverge on the following points. In good faith, REA created a, a control group for comparison of students in the two grad high schools with similar students from all across the district, with the understanding and agreement that the KCS School District does not have a legitimate control group for comparing students outside of the grad high schools. There just are no other district high schools with the same concentration of challenges as Austin East and Fulton. An economically disadvantaged student with similar demographics and academic background who attends Harden Valley, or Farragut, or STEM Academy does not have access to the same school resources as a similar student at Austin East or Fulton. The control group also doesn't account for high-achieving students within Austin East and Fulton who choose not to spend their summer doing the summer institutes and thus don't meet eligibility for the project grad scholarship, but those students are still served with their college search assistance. The third-party evaluation noted, quote, "The comparisons between PGK high schools and other district high schools that produced the first two findings are most certain, or most surely tilted against the program." Second, the evaluation threshold that was used to evaluate grad is more stringent than commonly accepted reporting methods for educational programs anywhere. The third-party evaluation noted, "The estimated effect of attending a PGK high school on post-secondary enrollment is positive and statistically significant." The REA analysis applied an unusually stringent criteria for statistical significance, a P value that is basically point 0000000001 compared to the, the national threshold of 0.05. The thrive, 5% threshold is accepted by the National Center for Education Statistics and the What Works Clearinghouse, the U.S. Department of Education's Clearinghouse of Evidence for Educational Evaluations. And then third, the third-party evaluation notes that the completion window used for post-secondary attainment does not use the commonly accepted standard 150% or, or six-year timeframe. According to the commonly accepted reporting methods, only the grad cohorts of 2005 through 2011 have had time to complete, and therefore should be included in the study. Also, what's not represented in the report are more than 8,000 volunteer hours and over $207,000 in student and family support donations over the REA reporting period. Also missing are 11,000 basic needs, social services, and emotional support provided to address the barriers that come to school when 86% of brilliant students have limited resources. That is 11,000 times teachers could keep teaching because there was a grad handoff, so the students' need could also be addressed. Grad provides exposure and experience opportunities, college and career, kindergarten through higher education, to inspire hope and make connections for positive relationship building. Since 2002, grad and community partners have provided 4,655 summer institute experiences to 2,611 students. Since 2005, $6,200,000 in grad scholarships has been awarded to 1,550 students. Beginning in summer 2018, grad will provide paid summer internships in businesses across the city for students from Austin East and Fulton High Schools. Opportunities sometimes seem overwhelming to students who have a mindset of survival, when concerned about food and clothing, and who perhaps may be couch homeless, or trying to figure out what to do when nobody picked you up today. A summer institute opportunity seems not so important in comparison. Many students who are supported with weekend food backpacks in collaboration with our Second Harvest Partnership only eat at school. Grad leads collaboration with community partners to provide holiday assistance and discreet support at prom time and graduation. When students reach the age they can legally drop out and are determined they're gonna leave, it's grad staff working with guidance to connect those young people with community partners who can help them get a GED or HSET when they are ready. Not all of the young people we serve are economically disadvantaged. In fact, 14% of them are not. But even those students are better people for having gone to school with diverse classmates who in every other way are just as capable. At the grad-sponsored community lunches for both Austin East and Fulton partners and nonprofits come together to share resources and hear the great stories of what's really going on in center-city public schools, learning firsthand from those principals how they can help. It's hard for any of us to capture all of that in statistics. Project Grad Knoxville has always operated through a lens of transparency and accountability. There are and have always been standing appointments on the grad board of directors for the sitting superintendent, a K8 grad principal, a grad teacher rep, and both grad high school principals, giving access to full disclosure of operations and finances, as well as the opportunity to have ongoing input into programming and desired outcomes for grad services. Our city is experiencing a shift in Knoxville's urban community around aspiration for higher education. Grad is helping to change the narrative about college and career opportunities beyond high school. And this board cannot do everything that needs to be done without more support, but I'll say more about that in my public forum comments.
Thank you, Ma, uh, thank you, Ms. Chandler. Could you tell me where we were in 2001 as far as graduation rate in Knox, in AE and Fulton?
When, when we began our, our partnership work together, the combined graduation rate for Austin East and Fulton was 50%.
50%. And so now that we are, as Steve said in his report, it's about the same, but it would, it'd be the same?
The, the, 2016 report combined was 78%, and those graduation rates are reported a year in arrears. And after, in fact, the first initial 10 years of our contract, the graduation rate had actually gone to, to 85%.
And due to a lot of changes in, in what's going on in the school system, you would think that had an impact on our graduation?
You know, one of the things that we know is, is happening, and it's an, it's an unintended consequence, but when opportunities, new academic opportunities are made available that pull students away, then enrollment goes down. And when enrollment goes down, then positions are lost. And when positions are lost, then programs are gone. You know, I listened to the CTE conversation, and I thought, you know, we've now lost the, the construction trades program at, at Austin East because enrollment was, was gone. So, what happens is, the students that are remaining in the school don't have the, the opportunities that other students have other places. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things that we gotta deal with to keep them motivated to stay and finish.
So, in the most, most cases, and I'm gonna finish, I know, but, but in most cases, the, the higher achievers are the ones that transfer out. So, you got what you have left. So, when you say that they are graduating and staying a, a, a current with the rest of the schools and throughout the district, that is an achievement in itself.
Correct.
And, okay, and another thing is, I guess another question. As far as project grad is concerned, it also keeps employment for people that are very interested in the amount of money that Knox County gives is just, it's very relevant and something that's necessary, but you can account for every penny and every dime and every dollar, and how it does benefit and goes towards the care of our children in Knox County and those 14 schools, correct?
Correct, every, every dime. We're, we're good stewards of the dollars that the district invests.
And we do get that report on a regular basis. And we do get that report on a regular basis.
We do, every year. We have, our finances are independently audited every year. And the Knox County Schools' part of the money it takes to provide Project Grad is about 45% of the total budget. The private sector provides the rest.
And it would be devastating to us if it does not receive any funding from Knox County?
Yeah. Somebody's going to have to decide, do we continue to provide this for young people who really need it?
And if we don't have it, then some kids will suffer tremendously, may go home hungry, continue. I mean, I'm just being honest. I mean, if it wasn't for Project Grad, our kids would suffer tremendously, right? In some sort of fashion.
Yes. We serve the, some of the most vulnerable students that the district has, as was presented. That part, we don't disagree with.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. I actually, I didn't have a question for you. I had a question for Mr. Spencer, so if there are no more questions for Ms. Chandler.
Okay. I don't see any others. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spencer, can you?
Thanks, Gary. I think I asked for this maybe when we had our prelim talk, but Lord knows, I've slept since then. And I guess maybe this ties in with Steve as well. So in our prelim budget, I think the figure was 1 point something mil for Project Grad?
It's $1,041,742.
Okay. And I was interested in the breakdown of that based on high school, middle, elementary. Do you?
You'll have to get that from Project Grad.
Oh, okay. So we, it's just a dollar amount and then they?
That was the point I was attempting to make in the discussion.
Unless I had enough coffee that day.
Didn't have an opportunity to.
Okay.
If you look at the memorandum of agreement between Project Grad and the district, there's a requirement that Project Grad bring a detailed budget to the district for negotiation every year, and that that would, in my mind, create the contract between Project Grad and the district once that budget was approved by the board. As so happens, I've looked through all the files I can find, and the last time a detailed budget was presented to the board was for the year, fiscal year 2013. And at that time, that was negotiated over a long period of time between Ron McPherson and Jim McIntyre and Stephanie Jenkins. And it was presented to the board in July as part of an amendment to the original budget request that had not flown through commission. Since that point in time, the only adjustments I've seen to that number, which was $1,241,742, was in two fiscal years, it was reduced by $100,000. But since FY '16, '16, '17, and '18, it's been up to $1,041,742. Since this, that last meeting, Project Grad has provided a slew of information regarding the spend over the years. But, in my mind anyway, that should have been presented to the board each year for approval.
Okay. I have it, well, I guess maybe Steve can answer the other part of my question then. Thank you. So I'm just curious, Stephen, I don't know what the basis for the discussion was around this program of, but I'm just wondering, because Project Grad goes from, you know, the elementary to the high school level. To me, the outcomes are only focused on the high school, which, you know, Project Grad states that directly in their mission, that it's to improve college attendance. So I'm wondering, was there any way for you to track if the, I guess this kind of goes back to my same magnet question, there was probably no way for you to track if a child had actually matriculated through a grad program from elementary to high school?
Not really. There really wasn't. Outside of my, outside of my study, we went around, John, Dr. Ryswick and I went around and spoke with a lot of the principals at those schools, and we spoke with principals at different levels. And I'm kind of hesitant to say anything because he's the one who summed all that up for superintendent, but there's really no way to track those kids from kindergarten all the way through.
Sure. So, and there's probably not, I'm trying to think of any sort of quantitative measure that you could even really use to determine the effect of the elementary or the middle school of this program?
Not, not that I could think of, no.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks, Gary.
Ms. DeFric.
Yes, can I ask Gary a question? I know you said that they didn't provide anything. Did they have, have we requested or do we have them to provide it? I know you probably don't know, but every time you've asked for it, have they provided you detailed information?
We asked them. John Ryswick sent Ms. Chandler an email back on February the 6th.
But prior to that, I mean, I'm just saying, we said you hadn't had anything in years.
I've only been in this job for two years.
Right. That's why I'm saying you wouldn't know. Okay.
I wouldn't know. But I will point out, the agreement ends June 30th, 2018.
Right.
So it's up to the board to review that agreement and approve it going forward. And I would, I would hope that that would include this annual budget process.
Okay.
That in my, in my research has not been performed.
Right. But once you ask for it, they do provide it?
Well, they didn't provide a detailed budget based upon the dollars we give them. They provided an overall budget and financial statement for the years.
I'm just saying, is that what you asked for? Did they give you what you, I mean, I know what you're saying, but sometimes you get what you asked for.
Well, I'm sure John can answer that question because his email request was fairly extensive.
Dr. Ryswick, do you want to come up? And Gary, before he comes or while he's coming, so in the, let me understand, because Gloria was making the point of, did we ask for it? Was that a part of the MOU that they would, the original MOU that they would provide Knox County with a detailed budget?
Well, they were supposed to propose a budget every year.
Propose a budget.
And that was supposed to be discussed and negotiated and based upon outcomes, determine what needed to be budgeted for the next year. And so then that was, that detailed budget, once it went through the administration, would have been presented to the board for approval and then would have been part of the funding process for the year. Just as you approve contracts for a number of reasons, this one should have been presented to you as well.
Okay. Doctor, okay, let's get Dr. Ryswick up here in a minute. Oh, sorry. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Fugit.
So I hear what you're saying about the contract, but legally, once the board approves the budget, we have agreed, we have approved what we're giving Project Grad.
You have approved that line item within the budget.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So I just, I worry sometimes that we talk a lot about what woulda, coulda, shoulda been done, and it implies that things are not valid or legal. I, but, you know, I think it is every superintendent's responsibility to ensure that that stuff is done, and then when they present a budget to us and we agree to every line item in the budget, we're approving what we're giving an organization. And so I think there's some, yes, we could do things better, but it concerns me a lot because we start throwing around a lot of languages about things aren't valid. Well, once a board approves the budget, it's valid.
Well, don't misunderstand what I'm saying.
I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying. I'm just saying that that conversation happens a lot around here.
Right.
And once a board approves a budget, it is legal. I am not arguing with you about whether they gave our staff what they were supposed to give our staff, but that's the staff's responsibility along with that organization to work that out. So I'm just saying, you know, if our finance department in previous years wasn't asking for it and getting that, that's on them.
Well, I would not disagree with you entirely, but I would disagree with you in that the process was not followed and it should have been followed.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you that the process was not followed. I'm just saying it takes two parties to make sure a process is followed.
That's correct. It takes two parties to enter into a contract. And I'm not a lawyer, thank God.
No, but...
But this also has to do with commission as far as the agreement is concerned.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and it's really a moot point because we have to approve something in 2018. So I guess a lot of what I wish we would talk about is whether we think the program is valid and whether or not it should continue and not spend a lot, a whole lot of time talking about woulda, coulda, shouldas, if we may.
Ms. Owen, who's your, who did you want to speak with?
I would just like to address the chair. I think it's very important, Madam Chair, that when we are looking at what has happened in the past, that we consider that as a pattern for any kind of decision that we might make in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ryswick, I think Ms. Roundtree had a question for you.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, I don't know that. Well, I was just going to say, you and Steve went around, I guess, and did some qualitative, semi-structured interviews. I know there's probably no measure that can be used to speak to the effectiveness of grad for elementary and middle, but I guess because we don't have that line item breakdown, to Ms. Fugit's point about discussing, you know, whether this program would continue as part of the budget, I mean, I think we can't look at this in isolation, y'all. I mean, I would love to, but the reality is that we're looking at a very challenging budget cycle. So I just appreciate hearing your feedback, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as part of this process, when this report came out, as Ms. Chandler referred to, we shared with Project Grad at that point, I think in one of our district leadership team meetings, I think Mr. Buzz Thomas was there and Mr. Bob Thomas, and we were talking at that point, knowing that June 30th was when the contract ended. So at that point, Superintendent Thomas asked me to kind of be the point person working with Ms. Chandler and having conversations and just try to see, you know, what kind of feedback we could get. So, and looking at those, we did, you know, we went to the people who, it affects the most, the principals in the schools, had conversations. We had two separate meetings, one meeting with secondary principals and then one with the elementary principals and just, you know, kind of briefed them on where we were, that this is, you know, the contract expires at the end of this year, whether they were aware or not with that, and that this was their chance to give us some feedback as we look toward the future and that we would be getting with Ms. Chandler and her team and providing them with that feedback. So kind of different conversations at different levels. I think in the secondary, where you see where most of the folks are concentrated, I think the high school folks, that's where, you know, again, where most of the people kind of have their home base, so there, it sounds like they're more kind of assigned to day-to-day things that happen there at Fulton and Austin East and kind of have ongoing roles. A little different when we talk to the middle school principals. I think it's important to note, too, that there are two different structures now from the original structure from where Project Grad was and there were assigned staff at those schools. Now, the majority of the schools that are middle school and elementary are, I shouldn't say that, it's 50/50 on the middle school level, are now community schools, which fold under Great Schools Partnership and are operated there. And so in the middle school level, Vine is one of those. Little Springs is not. We have a new principal at Little Springs this year, and so her conversation was, she wasn't exactly clear on the role or the function of the person that visited or was at her school. And so she, you know, thought she needs more clarity with that, which I shared with Ms. Chandler. Of the elementary school principals that serve there, most of them are now community schools, and they're happy being community schools and just kind of talking through those, what some were there during the transition, and just asking a question of the community school supports versus being a Project Grad school, kind of where you were formerly. And they were all unanimous, the current ones, that they'd rather be a community school with the supports that are provided there. We have two elementary schools that are not currently community schools that are slated to potentially become those. One of those principals expressed that they would very much like to be that and would trade out the programming they receive. The other one was still not quite sure what all was involved with the community schools, so she wasn't sure at that point. So currently, if two elementary schools and one middle school that are not community schools haven't converted over, when they do, they would, I mean, if that is, you know, the plan, which I think is part of what's in the works, they would no longer, they're grad schools in the fact that they're in the empowerment zone from the original school level. When I asked, when Steve and I asked about what kind of programming from Project Grad, Steve pointed out in his, in his presentation, you know, about the career days and the senior stroll, I believe is what it's called, and there's like a movie day they worked through with Regal. But for, by and large, the day-to-day, those community schools don't receive direct service from Project Grad. So these are all the same things we shared with Ms. Chandler when we met, and she, I mean, she agreed to that. There wasn't the, that's not necessarily designed once they fall into community schools, not that they're abandoned by Project Grad. They still can use certain things, but it's not the day-to-day interaction that they would get if they were a Project Grad school. So that was kind of their feedback, I think, is, as I would kind of expect, the high schools that have more of the people and kind of in their day-to-day functions, they are happy with the hands-on that they get from there. And I think the middle schools, the one middle school is a bit confused about the role. And the elementary schools, all except for one, seem like they would prefer to be a community school with the supports, naming the middle health component that was extremely important to them in that.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick.
Okay, next we, I know, but start with Ms. Hill on this one. Okay, so Ms. Hill.
I'm not exactly sure who to ask the question to. My several questions here. And John, you hit on a little bit, and you're talking about the breakdown of the employees. To be clear, whether this continues or does not continue, it does not impact, I'm asking, our community schools? We have no, if these people here go away, we still have our community schools coordinators, we still have our campus managers, what?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. My understanding, the way, again, to Mr. Spencer's point, what is in this, this million dollars roughly, there are not, the positions that are in there for you all to be deciding on the next contract are not community school.
Kind of community school.
Correct. They're Project Grad positions. And I meant to answer this as well because when Mr. Spencer had asked that, I did send a, when Ms. Chandler and I had a conversation about, as a board, as you all were deciding, you know, their overall budget, that they would probably, you all would probably be interested in what your dollars went to as far as what you were allocating there. So that was what was part of the request, to see what the Knox County portion of the budget went to. And so that's how we got to that number. Sorry, I forgot to answer that last time.
So is the Knox County part of the budget go to these positions?
Not to the community school positions, but to the project.
No, no, not the community school.
Right, to the Project Grad positions.
I'm back on Project Grad.
Correct. The ones that are currently in the high schools that Mr. Rutter referred to, the middle schools, and then there's just two elementary schools that receive a position from there. Those are part of the Knox County funding, not the scholarships, not the summer institute, none of that's included.
Part of the Knox County funding that we give in a block to Project Grad?
Correct. It's just the positions, not the scholarship, not the institute, and not the community schools.
Okay. So I'm looking at this breakdown. There's two full-time employees that work at the elementary schools for Project Grad?
And my understanding is that is the two schools that are not, you might be able to help, Steve. Those are the two schools that are not community schools. So Bell Morris and Spring Hill are still receiving a Project Grad person in lieu of being a community school.
And that is what's paid for out of the Project Grad grant?
That's what's paid out of Knox, out of what you all allocate to Project Grad.
Okay. When I say a Project Grad, I'm talking specifically about that million-dollar block.
Correct.
Okay. That is money that's taken out of that million-dollar block, these positions here. Is that correct? Everybody, anybody, is that correct?
That's my, come on, that's my, come on, but that's my understanding from the two elementary positions that are not community schools.
Madam Chair, thank you. Buzz Thomas, Great Schools Partnership. Yes, so the money that you all provide to Project Grad does not pay for any of the community school staff, just the grad staff, and it is our intention this year to convert those three remaining grad schools to community schools. That's our plan. We have to raise the money for that, and we feel like we're going to be able to do that.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. So in this block, there are 10 at the high school level. So you have five, five Project Grad employees at each, at each high school? Well, like I said, I'm not sure.
I thought, okay.
All right. So there's five extra people at each high school that, that, that their focus is providing services? They're not teaching positions, they're not?
Okay. So the positions at the high school, the high school format was redesigned at the request of the, of the, of the system when the schools that we serve went to the small learning community academy model. And so there are three college and career access coaches, a student and family support person because they have to deal with a lot of the social and emotional concerns there. social and emotional concerns there, and then a team leader. And so, they are working with the guidance staff, and with the principals, and with the small learning communities within those high schools, because those schools have that design instead of the comprehensive high school design.
Okay. I had asked about enrollment at the two schools. Does anyone happen to know at AE and Fulton what those enrollments are?
Mr. Rutter, do you know the enrollment?
Not off the top of my head, but I can, I can get that to you. That's easy.
Somebody in the audience has got to know.
What about Ms. Hickman back there? Cheryl, can, can you speak to that?
Thank you, everyone. I'm Cheryl Hickman. I'm the Secondary Director. I can give you a best guess. At Fulton, it's about 9:43. At Austin East, it's close to 500. They're saying six. I'll have to check on that and get it to you.
Wow. Okay. The suggestion was made that if this program goes away, that suddenly services like ability to access food and to access social services and this type of thing goes away also. I have a little bit of a problem with that statement, because whether any of our high schools have all these extra people or not, there's still, there still is the ability there to access services. I'm just, I'm just saying. I'm sure it wouldn't be near as comprehensive as what, when you've got one person basically focused on 100 kids, that certainly that would be much better ratio, but the services are still there and still available. And that, that's just kind of a side note, and that's speaking from the social worker in me, that those, you know, services don't go away, even if the people aren't necessarily there to help facilitate those services. The goal of Project Grad, though, is specifically to increase high school graduation and to promote secondary or promote postgraduate schooling. Is that correct?
Mr. Rutter, do you want to come back?
Yeah, that, that is at least what I found in their published literature.
And the, the one statement, and this is so what I don't know, about the statistical percentage that you use as opposed to what Ms. Chandler presented, .05 is the .000000.
Right.
Can you speak to that?
I can try. So, so the difference, what we're really talking about is the difference between statistical significance and practical significance. So, so when I did my power analysis, there's, there's lots of things, the variables that go into that are, at what rate are you willing to make statistical errors, the size of the data that you're using, which in this case was a very large data set, it was like 20,000 students, because keep in mind, it was the whole district for seven years. And so, and then, what effect size, what minimum effect size you're looking for. And so, so what, the way I set those variables were, I was looking for a small effect by statistical rules of thumb, and then, of course, the amount of data is the amount of data. So, so when you, when you include all that information, that's, that's how you calculate the threshold for significance. So, a good way to think about it is, when you have lots and lots of data, it's like turning the volume up on a stereo very, very loud. So, any little whisper, you're gonna be able to hear it. So, and even if that whisper is insignificant to the song overall, you can still hear it, right? And so, I was trying to filter out some of that, some of that. And so, that's what I said, the effects I listed there, three out of every 100, and you guys can decide whether that's a whisper worth listening to or not.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. And another statement that was made that kind of, I had a little bit of a problem with, is that I get that total environments can be different from one place to another. I totally get that. But that's not to say that if a student at any other school falls into the economically disadvantaged range, that they are not still economically disadvantaged, or that they're an English language learner, or if they're a student with disability, they still have that, that set, so to speak, that they have to, to deal with. So, just because that they're at one school and instead of another school does not minimize the fact that those issues are there and they still have to deal with them. So.
Okay. Ms. Fugit, thank you for your patience. You're next, and then Ms. Horn, and then Ms. Dethridge. Maybe we can take a break.
Yes. Maybe we'll wrap up this conversation and take a break. My couple of quick questions. One, at some point, I assume Project Grad will actually propose something to us, that they would like us to consider funding. Do we even have, has that happened? Is this just a conversation about what has happened, and we're thinking a million dollars, or is there, is there a proposal coming to the school system in light of the fact that community schools may change and that kind of stuff? I'm just asking that.
For my part, this is about what has happened.
Okay. So, when we throw, so when we're talking about the million dollars, we may or may not be asked for that much money. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't, nobody needs to answer it. I'm just throwing that out there. Then, my other question, so Dr. Roswick, am I understanding you to say that the fact, that the existing principals at those elementary schools who are going to convert don't want Project Grad in their school? Dr. Roswick, I mean, you know, I mean, let's quit monkeying around. I mean, is that sort of the recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can probably answer two of your questions. The first one is that, yes, Project Grad has sent a draft of an MOU to us. We've been looking at that internally. We have a meeting scheduled with Buzz and with Ronnie to have some deeper conversation about some of those things. So, that has happened at this point. Your, if your question was of the two remaining elementary schools, so we have one middle school and two elementary schools, and what would their wish be, to stay a Project Grad school or to become a community school, one has expressed interest, one elementary, to become a community school over Project Grad. One has expressed they like their grad person, they're, they want to know more about community school. I said the other two, the middle school and the, and the elementary have, I think they're just not as aware of all those things. As they heard the other principals talk about those, they talked about, you know, Helen Ross, Helen McNabb and the services they provide, they kind of said, we'd like to know more about that before we made a decision.
And when will they make a decision?
Well, some of that is, as Mr. Thomas, Mr. Buzz Thomas has said, you know, some of that is dependent on funding, too. So, how we can do that, and before we even officially make the offers to them, I believe.
I'm just kind of pushing to get some resolution here. Again, again, all I'm trying to get to is, we have to vote on a budget in a couple of months, and I just need to know that all this is gonna be worked out, and everybody's gonna be happy with what you guys present to us, and then we decide whether we think it's worth funding or not. You know, that, that's the bottom line for me.
So, Superintendent Thomas and Dr. Roswick, and I'm the Board Chair for Project Grad. So, the President of Great Schools Partnership is the Board Chair of Project Grad by ex officio, okay? And so, Ms. Chandler and I will be meeting with them this week, and you all will have a proposal. I just wanted to correct one thing that was said that I don't think is quite accurate. Even though we're going, our plan is to convert those three grad schools, those two elementary schools and that middle school to community schools, we don't fall out of partnership with Project Grad. At those schools, Project Grad still has staff working within the feeder patterns in the old empowerment zone. So, they're still involved, even though they won't be full-time staffing the schools like we will be through the Great Schools Partnership.
So, all that will be explained in the MOU. Got it.
Thank you. Ms. Fugit, did you have anything else?
I think I did, but I've forgotten it, and let's just.
Okay. Well, then we're going to Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know. Okay, just to reiterate, we have roughly 100 to 150 students probably per year in Project Grad in these high schools. Would that be accurate? Can you? 135 per year, the scholars.
That would be?
Per school, 135 per school or?
That would be the number of scholarship recipients. All of the school, all the students in the school are served by Project Grad. Project Grad is a total school program. It's not a pull-out program. The students who qualify for the scholarship have graduated on time with their class with a 2.5 or higher GPA, and they've attended two summer institutes at either Pellicippi UT or T-CAD.
Okay. So, all students are in Project Grad?
Yes, they're, yeah, total school program.
This is the number that have qualified?
Qualified for the scholarship, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I'll go to Ms. Dethridge, and then Ms., now Ms. Owen, you put your. Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to Ms., finish up with Ms. Dethridge.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something that Ms. Hill said, and that is, I may misunderstood me when I said that they won't get any kind of service if this goes away, because they will as far as.
I did indicate that they would. The implication was that the, if the school, if Project Grad goes away, that they won't get these services.
No, they will get services, but they don't get, they won't get the same amount of services, because you have, even though there are disadvantaged and special need kids in every school, it's not to the massive amount that you have in a disadvantaged population area. So, it's not to the same extent of what we're having, they're having to deal with. Also, when we talk about, the reason why you have Project Grad is because we had principals that brought it to the table, because if Knox County was doing it before, we wouldn't have never needed Project Grad. There was a need to do the things that they are doing, and it was brought to us by two, three principals, because they understood the need, and that the people, or the students in the 14 schools needed those services. And because we've gone on to community schools and other things, does not mean that those services and the need has not gone away. I think we have looked and tried to figure out how to do that, but Knox County just doesn't have the money, the resources, or the people to get it done, and that's why the need for Project Grad still exists. So, I just don't want us to get confused about, let's worry about the money versus the services that we provide to the kids. And that's really where we are. I'm bringing with Ms. Fugit, we just need to get to the point of, we need the services, are we willing to provide the money to continue the services that's needed in those areas?
Thank you, Ms. Dethridge. Okay, with that subject.
May we take a recess?
We are taking a recess, and we will reconvene at 20 till 8 on our last two topics.
The packet that I delivered, and either myself or a couple of them, Ms. Coteany delivered for me, but that is really the background information that accompanies these kind of summary slides. The reason I wanted to provide that for you is for a couple of reasons. Number one, I wanted you to be familiar with the process. I have a few people that I'm gonna acknowledge. Jeffrey Wright and Dr. Karen Loy have been really instrumental in conducting several of our feedback sessions with the parent groups, with teacher groups, using the adaptive school process, so that we make sure that all voices are heard. Ramona Dew, who was very integral in making sure that we had heard that student voice, Kenley was involved in some of the, where is she? She left. Okay, Kenley was involved in some of those processes as well, and then Richard Baughman, who always brings everything together. We will hopefully soon be looking at J-191, which is the misbehaviors and disciplinary options. You have in your attachments that were sent to you by the superintendent earlier, just a couple of weeks ago, the J-191, and then you've received the behavior levels and responses, the definitions, and the positive behavior intervention definitions. I want to tell you that, obviously, the policy is something that you will be voting on, but the procedural attachments really are the fluid document. If you look at the, if you look at the behavior levels and responses that are in your packet today, we had our last information feedback session with principals last Thursday. They made an additional request for a change, and we've made that change. One of the things that I want everybody in this room to know is, every single piece of feedback that we have received from elementary, middle, and high school principals over the multiple sessions and all. and all of that's documented in the notebook, the feedback sessions that we've had with them, we have made that change. So when principals have said, "This ought to be a Level Two, not a Level Three, this one should have, we need to think about the number of suspensions," we've had multiple opportunities for feedback, and there's not a single recommendation that a principal or principals have made that we have not incorporated exactly as they have requested into this document, so I just want you to be aware of that. So I want to talk a little bit about why we think this is a good thing, and not just that, I could speed, a lot of times, giving you a lot of statistical research, because there's a lot of research about these different programs. School-wide Positive Behavior Support, Restorative Intervention, uh, Restorative Practices, there's a lot of research that says why this is a good thing. But I'd rather take a look at what's happening in Knox County schools to tell you why this is a good thing. So if you look at school year fifteen, sixteen, and you just look at our out-of-school suspensions, and you see that reduction, you'll see what we, our data is for last school year of the number of incidences of out-of-school suspensions. My friend, Mr. Rutter, is he still here? He snuck out. Mr. Rutter's done a lot of analysis for us on this, and what we know is that decline is directly a result of the schools who have been implementing with fidelity some of the practices that we're talking about. When we look at, where do we see those reductions? So that's, that's our first piece of evidence. The other piece of information that I would share with you is looking at, what do office referrals look like in our school district, um, over the past few years? So we've just picked some schools, and we tried to select some that we know have some additional resources through Title I, but we also tried to pick some schools that did not, so that you can just look at. I'm not talking about just out-of-school suspensions, I'm talking about what happens in classrooms, what happens in your hallways, what happens in the cafeteria. When we look at the decreases, looking at the first year being in blue, the second year being in orange, and then this past year seventeen, eighteen, are this, are the reductions. So I feel like, again, a really solid piece of evidence that says, schools who are implementing these practices, not only are they suspending kids less, they're actually spending less time in the office. And one of the things when Mr. Wright talks about his section is he's going to tell you about what that does for administrator time, and how much, how much instructional time, how much administrator time is taken when we're dealing with ongoing behavior issues on the back end, rather than investing on the front end. So, you know, we started on this journey together before, uh, Mr. Thomas became our superintendent, but it was very encouraging to me when I think about what our district goals are, about increasing student achievement, creating a positive culture, and eliminating disparities in education. And you think about, if we have students who have traditionally in our district been suspended at a disparate rate, and they're missing time in the classroom, then obviously we're going to see an increase in their achievement. When you think about, um, the kids who are disrupted in their learning, and the teachers, you know, that teacher, that classroom, where the magic happens, when teachers can focus their attention on good instruction with less disruption. If you think about our School-Wide Positive Behavior Support video that we showed earlier, one of the things that resonated in the teacher conversation is how much I'm able to do a better job in my classroom, because I'm able to spend more time teaching. Are there growing pains for this, as we train staff and they're learning to use it during the implementation curve? Absolutely, we're going to have some times where we're going to have some growing pains. But in the places where we've reached that threshold with training, we're providing lots of support, we've start, you know, we're seeing a significant change in the curve, in what our outcomes. And then again, creating that positive culture. I would ask some of you, and I know you've been in your schools where you've seen the difference. I mean, I've talked to some of you who've visited classrooms after we've implemented school-wide, and just, I think about South Door Middle specifically, it's a different place, and it's, and we've had a change in a lot of things, but Mr. Brown will tell you, his implementation, he brought that skill set with him from where he came, and it's a different place. It changes the culture of a school. So how did we get feedback? One of the things when we brought this to you earlier, in, um, I guess, late summer, you asked us, what, we need more information, more stakeholder feedback, so I won't go over this slide extensively, but I will just point out, we've communicated with various groups. So you can see we've talked to principals repeatedly, we've helped to the community, we've talked to parents, we've talked to students, we've really tried to make sure that we've incorporated everybody's feedback into where are we going as a district with this initiative. So some of the overarching themes, and again, we had, um, let me pull my numbers, because I think this is important. We had almost thirteen hundred responses to our parent and community feedback. I think one of the important things to note is, although it's anonymous, we do know that, that it will do some IP which can't be traced, but it will tell you if anybody's used the same computer twice. There were thirty-six responses that had, that shared an IP address, which means maybe mom and dad did it from their home computer. But, um, overall, thirteen hundred responses, the majority of those were independently done from different, either devices or, or technology, so I just thought I would share that. But one of the things that we've heard from parents is the importance of parent involvement, how they support progressive discipline, and we're going to talk about that when we look at the feedback. Um, flexibility, they, there's a big interest in the elimination of violence in schools, and one of the things that PBIS and Restorative Practice really emphasizes is building that safe culture, building that place where kids know they have support. If you listen to kids, or students who have had difficulties and challenges in school, a lot of times they're missing that connection with that person of, in the school setting where they can really feel like they are heard. There's an increase and an emphasis on respect for teachers, and certainly a tremendous emphasis on making students understand that they are in charge of their behavior and that they are accountable for that. And so that accountability piece just resonates throughout. So if you look at our results of our survey, and you have a copy of the survey in your document, we ask, we gave scenarios, because it's a really comprehensive thing to ask, um, our community to look at all of the different levels and what that, that does that mean. But we gave very specific examples of some common behaviors that we see that result in out-of-school suspension. And we set it up where the first response is our current practice. The second response is, um, uses our new behavior guidelines, but no restorative practices. So that would be the second column that you see. The third column has the new guidelines with restorative practices as a piece of that intervention that we would use. We did not label it that, we just described what event would happen. We didn't say, "This is restorative practices, this is not." We just described the process a student would experience. And the last one is just kind of a, a minimal consequence. It may, it may be something that, it's less than probably what would have happened under our discipline policy, but it gives the, um, sorry, that it does give the, um, a, a, more of a minimal response. So you can look at that columns up there, and you can see overwhelmingly, uh, that we had agreement that the restorative practices, and in most situations, the restor, the new guidelines were what were selected by the majority of parents. And again, I will repeat one more time, that's almost thirteen hundred stakeholders that took the time to fill out that survey.
So this is, we, like Missy showed you on a slide before. We did six, uh, teacher feedback sessions across the district. Uh, principals selected a couple of staff members that they're choosing to, to attend these sessions, and this is the feedback, it's very consistent across all, um, all of the sessions. Majority of the staff felt that this was good for students. Um, they liked the opportunity that the guidelines gave to put the kids in their classroom more and increase the amount of instructional time. You know, that what, what Missy said about decreasing, um, office referrals, and what does that really mean? You know, the kids out of the classroom, we, and office referrals, twenty-five, sometimes forty-five minutes, that a teacher could be dealing with something, or a principal could be dealing with something, and when those numbers go down, instructional time goes up, and therefore academics go up, and they like that. Um, talking about these, a lot of the, we have several comments saying, you know, this is just what, this, these strategies are just what good teachers do all the time anyways, and I thought that was interesting. Um, they thought buy-in, you know, obviously buy-in is very important, um, for everybody in the building. Um, you know, this paradigm shift, that, you know, they understand, understood that it's going to be, there's times that it can be difficult, and it's not always going to be easy, but in the, in the end, it's going to be worth it. And, and they said that, and there'd be a payoff down the road. Um, one of the worries was resources. It was, it was staff and people and, uh, some training and things like that. Um, the next slide looks at, this is the feedback, after these staff left, they got an online survey, and just had, just these four questions. And we asked them, we said, "If, if these proposed discipline guidelines were to be implemented, would they be beneficial to teachers, be beneficial to school culture, be beneficial to administrators, be beneficial to student achievement?" And you can see from left to right there, strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree. And, and the feedback was pretty positive about the, the, if we were to implement the new guidelines, the proposed guidelines, that, that they'd have a positive impact on, on those four factors there.
So when we think about the administrator, because certainly the feedback from our administrators is very important to us, and they're the people who are on the front lines, running schools every single day. Some of the things we heard from them is that we needed to refine some of the definitions. Uh, Brian Hartzell, Gary Dupler, and several of us spent many days looking at Tennessee Code Annotated, looking at what we heard from the principals, specific questions about how can we clarify things for them. So we feel like we have the definitions in a really good place. Move some of the behaviors around in the levels. As I shared to you, every single recommendation any administrator in the school system made, we have put into that process, without question. We didn't, we didn't even, why, what, we moved it. Um, hard to implement the plan at all grade levels, we've acknowledged that. Um, but there, that's why, if you look at the guidelines, there's that little disclaimer that says principal prerogative is still there, because sometimes principals have information that they need to make a decision with, that's the best thing for them to do to run their schools. Where do we get and how do we allocate resources? Um, without question, to do this in the most effective way is definitely going to require some additional resources. Um, but I will tell you that that should not be a reason to stop us, and for many of our schools, it has not been a reason to stop. We have schools that have Title I, and they're able to pay for some additional positions, but we have several schools that do not have those resources, and they've been able to implement a lot of the strategies and have really good outcomes with the existing staff. That doesn't mean that in order to really address things that we aren't going to, need to come to the board at some point and do some additional ask, I don't want to create that picture, but, um, it's an investment that is definitely worth it when you think about what the outcomes are. Um, district buy-in, administrators talked about district buy-in. I had several principals who stood up at the last principals' meeting and said, "We agree this is the right work, we just need to make sure that all of the resources and supports are in place." School-level buy-in, um, where we have our most success is where we have the principals who are very invested, and they lead that work within their school. And then again, training is critical, and Jeffrey's going to talk about that in just a minute.
Missy?
I'm sorry, yes?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hill just made note that Mr. McMillan had pulled his microphone down, so he may have, this is why he may have a question before you go further.
I'm sorry.
I do, I just want to ask you, I want you to talk a little bit more about, uh, the resources.
Okay.
And, and specifically, what do you mean? Uh, are you talking about personnel, how many? Uh, uh, and I know you, you can't at this point, but you have a, you know, sort of an overview of what we're talking about to implement it, and, you know...
Yes, sir.
Uh, may, maybe some type of dollar amount that, that, that you're shooting for.
I, I do have some information that I can share with you, do you mind if I finish this and then share that at the end, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, we've kind of categorized, and one of the things we did at the last principals' meeting, which was just last week, is we categorized all of the information that we've heard about, from buy-in, staffing, and resources, and training into, into those big categories, and we responded to the administration to say, "Here's kind of our plan for that." And some of it's still fluid, and some of it we're still developing, but I want to share a little bit about that with you. So the buy-in, that consistent messaging, making sure that every stakeholder in Knox County schools understands the why, about why we are doing this. And that all, again, ties directly back to Mr. Thomas's three priorities, because we do want to increase student achievement, we do want to eliminate disparities, and we also want to make sure that we have a positive school culture in every school in Knox County. Um, to make sure that school administrators and central office are on the same page, my staff and myself and several people have been really engaged in that work, but the entire central office that's supporting are not always familiar with all of the lingo that goes around the, you know, just like special education, there's a lot of acronyms, so we're going to make sure that we have the entire central office on board so that all of those teams that are supporting the schools know those, that, that same language, so we're all speaking at this, from the same sheet of music. Um, training, we have, and Jeffrey's going to talk a minute, a minute about what our training plans are for the remainder of the, uh, making sure that all of our schools get training. We're talking about monthly visits, well, the principals, the support network teams are visiting schools monthly, and when everybody is on that same page, we'll really be able to provide the support that schools need. And then our district learning days, I've met with Ms. Jackson to talk about, how do we balance that importance between that good academic learning, new standards, et cetera, but also with building that firm foundation so that school culture is very positive, behaviors are under control, so that the teachers can do that, make the magic happen in the classroom. Staffing and resources, back to your question, Mr. McMillan. We, we really do, one of the feedback from principals is that they need that Restorative Learning Center, but they also need a place for when the students aren't quite ready for that. I don't know that we're talking so much about a traditional ISS, so one of the things that we, we really need is a middle and high school ISS-ish, I don't think we'll necessarily call it that same thing, but we really do need both of those positions, so that's an ask. Um, elementary counselors, I don't think this is new news to everybody, anybody. We have, we have schools in our district that have a counselor a half a day or one day a week. I don't think anybody would think that that's reasonable, but that's utilizing the resources to the best of our ability. We need a full-time counselor in every school. I don't plan to ask for everything all at once, but you're asking what we need, I'm just telling you, this is what we need to make it effective. Mental health support, at the March Board Meeting, you're going to see a contract. We did an RFP, and Helen Ross McNabb ran that contract. You're going to see that for twenty-three thousand dollars a year, we can have a mental health worker in schools. I don't know if, I'm, I've made a request in the general purpose budget, I'm very much aware that it's not a great year for that. I'm working on grants, I'm looking at how we're using our Safe Schools money. I've talked to schools about how they use their title dollars, so I think that that's something that we can make a reality in some of our schools, maybe not all of our schools, using, uh, external resources next year. Knowing that eventually we would have to be able to sustain that, but knowing that it's not the best budget year. And then behavioral support, a critical piece of that is making sure that there are people to provide that support, that have that specialized training to provide support to all of our schools.
So, looking at some of the training things that we have going on, parent training. Uh, we've, we've had two community, uh, parent-community meetings already. Um, we're actually meeting with the Family Advisory Council Thursday night to talk about this and PBIS and Restorative Practices, and, and hopefully going to be providing many more opportunities to, to get the word out and do that as well. Um, the train the trainer for Restorative Practice, looking at increasing our, um, our, our certified trainers across the district. Uh, one of the things we'd like to do is have a trainer in every school, and we've been talks with the IIRP, the International Institute of Restorative Practices.
Not a new perk, on a new position.
Right, not a, yes, no, not a new, not a new position, someone that's already in the building, so we have a certified trainer in the school. And then our district learning days, focusing on, um, which we have already. We focused in our district learning days already, doing some, offering classroom management sessions, uh, Positive Behavior Support Strategy sessions, and just to continue to, to, to work with our curriculum folks and, uh, use those days to talk about PBIS and Restorative Practices, um, for our staff. Uh, we are, we'll be offering some trainings, we're doing trainings, you know, in April for various, uh, for our school counselors and other various support staff across the system. Um, so we've got those things going. This slide, this will show, like, where are we now? You know, doing PBIS Restorative Practice Training, PBIS schools, we've got, um, after this summer, we, we have twenty-five additional schools that have not been through the two-day Restorative Practice Training. They're on schedule to come, uh, they'd be, they would come this summer to do that training. Along with the schools that are, you know, these, both of these trainings are not a one-and-done type thing, so the schools that have been trained in years past, they continue to come in the summers and bring teams of people to work on different, different aspects of PBIS, whether it's Tier One, Tier Two strategies and things like that. So, um, Restorative Practices, this past summer, um, you can see the schools that we've had trained already, this summer, we have fourteen more, um, that we will offer, uh, the two-day training to the summer, as well as bringing, cycling through every school again, to send additional staff, um, to those trainings. And, you know, one thing that we do in all these trainings, and these are two, two initiatives that we have going on, and one thing, um, that's, I think, very key in our trainings, and we try to do, whether it's PBIS training, Restorative Practice Training, or Crisis Intervention Training, other things we do is to, um, you know, we have schools that are implementing both of these right now, and we're really working with them to integrate them and embed them together, so it's not two separate things. And, and this slide just shows, you know, they, they work along a tiered model, and, and they, they go very nicely together. And we worked, um, throughout the trainings to make sure that, uh, schools know that, and, and how to do it together, do them together, so, um, okay.
So, back to, um, I do have, I do have some figures. I would have to come back and tell you, I don't think I have on here how many additional counseling positions we would need, but I can certainly get that information for you. If we were to do the, um, educational assistance at the middle and high school level to create that place that, again, ISS-ish, but maybe with a different name, that's about almost eight-hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that includes benefits, et cetera. Um, if we were to do, if we were to decide that we would do thirty mental health workers at twenty-three thousand dollars each, that would be six-hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, and then we have some additional things that, uh, you know... And then we have some additional things that, you know, like materials and supplies that, you know, but again, right now, our biggest priority would be staff. Again, I know it's a lot, it's a lot to ask for, but I will say, and I'm just going to use this moment to say, I am very passionate about, and I don't think I'm alone in this, our national crisis around youth mental health is very, very real. And we have to, we have to recognize that and we have to take some serious actions to support that. And again, this is a really good way to comprehensively look at the needs of all kids. Because when you think about that tier one, tier two, tier three, it's just like RTI. Tier one is what we do for every kid, so that every kid knows that they matter. Tier two are for those kids that might need a little bit more, and tier three is that next level. I know there's a financial ask. I will say to you that to do things as effectively as we know that can be done, we're going to need to address that incrementally over the years. But again, it is, the money alone is not a reason not to start implementing some of these practices because they are the right things to do for kids. So.
So, we, you know, you've seen our PBIS video and our good friend Prentice Elliott, very talented guy, has put that together for us, but we're working on the restorative practice video. And we do have just a short clip that we'd like to show you because we're in the middle of that process and getting that done, so. I'm not sure the microphone is on this, but let's watch it.
Process how they feel. I think our restorative practices and our PBIS program allows us, has allowed us to take those kids and let them step back and change their perspective on what school can be.
I think if suspensions were successful, then we wouldn't need to use them in high school. A lot of our students have had previous suspensions and interactions there. If we're not seeing a change or we're seeing an increase in behavior, I don't know that a suspension really serves the needs of the child.
If they're out, they're not going to get anything that's academically support, you know, it's not.
Just a second part, technical difficulty.
It almost happens when you embed video in PowerPoint that's longer than a minute and a half. I've just experienced that.
For some of our kids, when they walk into this, our school, day one, they are already feeling marginalized and already feeling like they don't fit in and already feeling like they want to fight back or push back. And if you, a kid like that walks into your classroom, it's going to be difficult to manage and difficult for your whole classroom. Utilizing restorative practices, it actually gives you the opportunity to, without having to worry about doing or saying something wrong, give the students some agency to express and process how they feel. I think our restorative practices and our PBIS program allows us to, has allowed us to kind of take those kids and let them step back and change their perspective on what school can be.
I think if suspensions were successful, then we wouldn't need to use them in high school. A lot of our students have had previous suspensions and interactions there. If we're not seeing a change or we're seeing an increase in behavior, I don't know that a suspension really serves the needs of the child.
If they're out, they're not going to get anything that's academically support, you know, it's not going to support or grow them academically in any way.
Being able to grow and analyze and reflect right in front of your eyes and come to a different conclusion than they might have otherwise is powerful.
For some kids, it's really an aha kind of life-changing moment when they realize that school can be a place they can be successful and there are people who care about them here. So, that's just a little bit of it.
So, again, I would emphasize the part about looking back at our first slide. It really is about effective research-based behavioral interventions with that high level of accountability. If you look at the recommendations from the task force that have been changed as a result of feedback from principals, suspension is still included. We're looking at reducing our number of days of suspensions. We're looking at putting some interventions in place and not making that our first tool in our tool belt. But we also understand that there are sometimes choices that students make that would result in them being removed from school. But again, the focus on how many things can we put in place to try to avoid that? And I will say one more time, our evidence is clear from our schools that, where we are implementing, that it is very effective. Now, I'll open it up to questions.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said that, that when you, we needed some people, but not new people?
So, no, yes, sir. When he talked about, we're looking at having a trainer, we're looking at pulling the restorative intervention staff from the International Restorative Intervention Institute to come down and train. One of the, one piece of feedback I received from one of the principals, Rob Spies, is he said it would be ideal if we could have, one of the things that's made it effective in his school is he has somebody in his building that's a teacher, that's a trainer, somebody that has an interest in this area, that has dedicate, he's dedicated in some of his resources to getting them trained. We're looking at some of our resources to get staff that are currently in buildings so that they will have a trainer in the school. So, that will be somebody that can help with teachers. No, we do have an additional need, again, long-term, yes, we would like to have the additional ISS-ish person in mental health.
I thought that we were talking about two different.
We are, sir.
I guess my question.
Yes, sir.
Would be, if, if you trained somebody to do that, would, would you not have to replace whatever they were doing? Or is it just a situation where you just train a teacher and they would just continue with their normal duties?
So.
Or would they not be training other people? You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I do. I think for some schools, it would depend on what the principal, again, I would, because we've talked about that with principals and it was something that they were very interested in, some people probably would arrange to do at least a release period. I think that would, I wouldn't tell principals how to do it in their schools. We just, they, I'm very much aware that they would like to have that resource available. So, what it looks like, and it's not that all of their teaching duties or if it was a school counselor, it could be an, I mean, one of the people that has been suggested is one of the assistant principals. It just depends on what works for each individual school.
So, you would prefer that the administrator in a given school?
I don't, I don't really have a preference. I would prefer for each principal to take a look at their school and say, "This is the person that makes the most sense."
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, let me ask you something else that you really didn't talk about, but it's, it was in the book.
Yes, sir.
That I looked at. If I understood it correctly, when you were talking about the responses, the five levels response, when you're dealing with the commission of two offenses at the same time, why do you go to the lower response as opposed to going to the higher level response?
Well, in a progressive model, you're talking about if you had like an A and a B, is that what, in the response? You said two offenses, you're talking two.
Well, two, two things, the student commits basically two things. One is a level two, let's say, and the other is a level four, all with the same process. What I read was, it said, "Not sometimes," or "Given the situation." It said, "You always go to the lower offense first."
Yeah, that was talking about the level response, if it has, if it has like the A and B, not if he, you know, was tardy to school and got in a fight. You don't go to the tardy to school and that's the only thing you discipline. What it's talking about, if you look at, on the, on the response column, it has a, you know, response level A, comma, B, or B, comma, C, that's what it's talking about for that one individual. It's not, you don't take the lower of the two offenses.
That's what it said. I mean, and maybe I just, maybe I misinterpreted it, that could possibly be, but I was surprised that it used the word "always go to the, to the lesser." Maybe it didn't say lower, maybe it said lesser of.
Okay, I could pull it and read and look at it if you want.
But you're clarifying, I just want to be sure, you're clarifying and saying that you would deal with the fighting situation and you would deal with the tardy.
Absolutely, right, right.
And if we need to clarify that.
I probably, I'll go back and look at it again and see if I.
And if we need to clarify that in our material, we can certainly do that.
Okay, okay. The other thing that I wanted to make is just, is just a comment. Whatever you decide, you said you realized that this was going to be a tough budget year, whatever you decide to bring forth as a proposal, and I'm not accusing you of doing this in the past, but what we have been, sometimes handed things like at the last moment and asked to discuss it and vote on it. Bring it to us early enough to where we have an opportunity to look at it and then have a chance to discuss it in advance to voting on it. Because if it's thrown at me at the last time, even if it's a good problem, there's a good chance I'd vote against it.
I certainly understand and respect that. And that's part of the reason why you have the notebook. It's really important for me that you hear all the voices that we're hearing. So, that's why I've shared all of that information.
I didn't mean to pick on you.
No, I don't, I don't take it. Yes, sir.
I think, I think we've talked about this, you know, bringing things late in the past and, and, you know, there's, there's, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Owen?
I want to go back and remind us of where we started with this back in August. In August, there was a motion made, I made the motion, to postpone Item 7 EE Board Policy J-191 Misbehaviors and Disciplinary Options to be sent back to the superintendent for development of a timeline that will allow comments from students, staff, and the community with reasonable time to develop a complete and final version of the policy, the disciplinary guidelines, and the definitions, with the current work as its basis, to be presented to the Policy Review Committee and subsequently to this board, no later than the February Work Session of 2018. As I recall, the reason that motion was made was because community members, staff members, did not feel that they had had reasonable and adequate input. And so, what I'm looking at now is that we had principal-selected teachers, not self-selected, principal-selected, two per school, which gives us less than 3% of our teachers giving feedback. I don't feel that that is adequate at all. When we want to allow comments from students, staff, and the community, I don't, I don't think we want to limit that to specially-selected students, staff, and community. That needs to be everyone. Less than 3%, that doesn't give us much to work with. Buy-in, I think, requires that we make an open and honest effort to get as much feedback as possible, not to go to the community and tell them what we're doing. That's not helping them buy in.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean by telling them what we're doing? I don't understand.
When we say that we want to quote, "Make sure community members understand the why," I think community members need to be telling us the why.
And I would argue that they probably have. I think when you look at the overwhelming support for restorative practices that you see on the, I don't, I don't think that.
I'm not talking about just restorative practices. This was specifically for our discipline committee changes. You've given us a lot of information about PBIS and restorative practices tonight, but that was not the purpose of this motion. The purpose of this motion was specific to Policy J-191.
Right, but that is, all of that, all of the restorative practices and the, all of those pieces that we're talking about today is what encompasses J-191. It's our misbehavior and discipline policy.
So, if I go to community members, they are going to tell me that they have had adequate input into this specific policy change?
I don't, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what a, an individual community, there are some community members here. I mean, we could certainly ask some of them. I think we put something out that we sent to all of our stakeholders and that went, that we have, we can, I can give you the results of how teachers responded to that. We could do a survey, an additional survey for teachers if that would be helpful information.
At this point, it's quite late to do that because all of this should have already happened and should have been presented to the Policy Review Committee before we were ever here looking at this. So, I guess the rest of the board should give us some input into that because if we have only had 3% of teachers, which is not all of the staff at all, that's just 3% of teachers, so I guess we're looking at 1.5% of the overall staff, I think we are going to have a problem with buy-in again, and we're going to be right back where we were. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Stafford?
Okay, I'm trying to look and see what, Ms. Owen, I remember that comment, I remember that session. When you say we had community parent online survey of almost 1,300 completed, did that go out? I mean, that went out to quite a few people, right?
It went out to everybody that's on our listserv.
Okay. And you had community parent feed.
Every parent of every student that has, we have an email address for, which is the majority of our families.
And then you had parent-community feedback sessions?
Yes.
And I guess our concern basically is the teachers then? Did we get enough teachers? And.
So, our process was we ask each, we told each principal that we wanted to have representation to give us feedback that would, that would mirror the feedback from their school. So, we asked them to send two teachers that, that, I mean, not that they, that they selected, but that would be representative of their staff.
So, it's like you didn't handpick those that you knew would agree with this process?
No, we did not handpick them at all.
So, I mean, the principal picked who he wanted, so. And it's basically probably those that were interested or, I'm not really sure, but I think you did get principals and, I mean, teachers' feedback. And I guess her concern is that we didn't get enough of it. But sometimes the principals have to make selections and sometimes, I don't know how long you had to get this done, because we've been working on it for a long, 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 long time. And we've got more and more, more and more information. I don't know how much more and more and more information we're going to need in order to move on with this process. So, I just feel like I'm really done. 10 monthly principal meetings and we've been dealing with this a long time. I'm really ready to go ahead and do something and move on and make a decision or, I mean, you know, have a conversation on whether we like it, whether we're going to proceed with it or what. But any more surveys and any more meetings and any more comments because we haven't got enough teachers, I think teachers had an opportunity to comment by now. If they have a problem, I think you've got emails. If you haven't, we need to get the teachers to give you the emails or whatever, but I don't think we should start the process because we've got community parents and now we don't have enough teachers. So, I'm just going to, you know, I'm not trying to disagree with what you said about the process, but we, I think we got some information from the teachers. I'm not really sure how much more we're going to have to have in order to proceed.
Ms. Owen, did you want to comment or question?
My problem is that the motion that this board approved, eight to zero, has not been met. So, I suppose we need to figure out how we're going to proceed since it has not gone to Policy Review and, you know, whether you want to consider 1.5% of the staff adequate input. And I think that goes back to having a complete draft to present to us. And if it hasn't been through all the processes, is it a complete draft? Thank you.
Ms. Beckett?
Thank you. Well, I think at this point, this is not a voting meeting, so the board can't decide anything. I would recommend that a draft be presented to the Policy Review Committee and then the board can decide whether they want to pass that policy or not, whether we think there's sufficient input. The timing is not correct, but we did have snow, flu, and ice. So, I understand the month of January kind of got away from us.
May I ask one more question? Because I want to know basically, what is a, I mean, we didn't give them a number. We just said survey. So, what is, are we looking at a particular amount of teachers or participation before we can move on?
If I could respond, I think my point is, at this point, we didn't. there's nothing for us to vote on or decide tonight, a policy, somebody needs to go back to Policy Review and Policy Review needs to decide if they're going to move a policy forward. If you think you've got enough to write a policy at Policy Review, I think that's the most reasonable action.
Any other comments? Ms. Hale.
I do appreciate what you've done, I can see that you all are just busting yourselves, and it's very much appreciated, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, I would say please look at the evidence in our own schools, please look at the evidence in our own schools. Visit some of those schools and talk to some of those teachers where we have thought things that are being implemented with fidelity, and talk about where they were when they started, because they're going to tell you, my gosh, this is, this is just too much, and talk to them about where they are today, please.
Okay, thank you. Are you okay or did you have?
I, I have a question for the Superintendent, I suppose. Are we saying that, that this policy has been implemented in some schools? Because that was my understanding, is that we were talking about this discipline policy.
I think when we discussed this, we talked about where the, the schools had been trained, that they were free.
We were talking about PBIS and restorative practices, not this policy, so it's completely different.
Right, now the policy, the policy is what the policy was, this hasn't, so.
Right, so that's.
That's, I mean, that's what we talked about, it's the principals.
So there's nothing we can look at to see how.
That you use, use the current policy, not, not the new policy until it's approved.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about voting, I'm saying we can't look at how it's been implemented, because it hasn't been implemented, because the whole purpose of this is the new policy. That was what the motion was, that we were supposed to look at.
But I think when we sent out in the fall, when we talked about this, that the school had been trained and they felt and may- maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if they'd had the, the Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems Training and Restorative Practices, that they were free to use that, if you haven't had the training, you know, use, so maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken.
The specific motion was Policy One J one ninety-one to postpone that item, Policy J one ninety-one, until the February Work Session, so that that new draft could be presented to us. So what we should be seeing is a completed draft that has been through all of these comment processes, not PBIS and restorative practices through comment processes, but the draft of the new discipline policy that we wanted to move to, through those comment processes and through through the Policy Review Committee. So we should only be looking at Board Policy J one ninety-one and whether that has been through those processes. So restorative practices and PBIS, though those are part of the policy, this was specific to the policy. So I, I think we need to I don't see how that can be done by the March meeting, but if it can be, great.
Mr. Spencer, you look like you're ready. Amber's got to change out her binders here from.
Okay, there we go.
No, I have it right here.
Okay, here we go. Back in October at your meeting, and you'll have, you'll see a binder in front, a black binder that has all the documents in it that were posted on the the web, the board's website. Back in your October meeting, excuse me, when you approved a fund balance designation for the Carne's Culinary Project, we were instructed to report back to the board on steps we've taken to tighten controls over, over procurement processes. I've got most of my staff back here, by the way, so if if I, if I receive an embarrassing question, I'm going to ask them to answer it. The, the documents you've gotten just basically outline some of the things we've done, there are various systems out that the school district uses for its employees to procure goods and services, and these systems are really governed by policies and regulations issued by either Knox County or the State of Tennessee. So what we did is take, took a closer look at those policies and procedures, and so you see what kind of supplemental controls, I'll call them that, that we could put in place to, to tighten up those processes and the controls we have over those processes. And in these documents, the first page, I, I wanted to bring two of these to your attention right away, and one of them is the Knox County Procurement Division's Munister Buy Speed System. One of the things that we found was that requisitions could be entered and purchase orders issued based upon the amount of budget at the major category level. And so we had that changed immediately to the budget line item level, because at the major category level, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars that could possibly be available to, to have a requisition and a PO issued. We also have restricted the right to approve requisitions that are entered into that system to certain individuals and certain departments, as well as our Business Services Office. And as part of that, the workflows within, especially this building, have changed, so that requisitions now for all, all departments that don't have that that ability or authority in the Buy Speed System, all those requisitions have to go through our Business Services Office. And I'll talk about that in more detail. Another system is the Knox County's E-card system. And we took a close look at that and the cards that were issued, and we reduced the number of cards issued from thirty-four to twenty and looked at the spending limits on those and the approval processes, as well as the reconciliation process, and put into place some some stronger segregation of duties with some individuals who have access to those cards, as well as the approval process. There are three other ways that we've identified for, to, distinct, for employees to use to procure goods and services, one of those is a fuel card system that we use for one, and now it's just one fuel vendor, and that's Pilot. And those fuel cards are used in accordance with the Knox County Procurement Regulations, as well as our internal controls over those, which if later on, they're identified and part of Board Policy Procedure. We also follow the Knox County, Knox County Schools Travel Policy and Regulations, and we follow the State of Tennessee Regulations regarding internal school funds, which I know you had the presentation, the audit, a couple of meetings ago. But as you go through this second document, you'll note that what I've included here are the authorities for these different systems and then the supplemental controls that we've put in place. One of the things I want to emphasize is that we began training on some additional controls in, in the procurement processes that we have in place in July of last year, and this was long before your approval of the designation of the fund balance. We've done a lot of one-on-one training with staff within this building, as well as explaining what the procurement policies and regulations are, and also emphasizing that all of these processes are governed by the Board of Education Policies, as well as the the administrative procedures. I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. But one thing I want to point out is, there's a document that's called Attachment A, which are the operational guidelines that we issued effective October one of last year, over purchasing process, and we, we inserted some additional steps there that are not shown in the Knox County Procurement Policies and Regulations, but first of all, how this, and just very briefly, how this has to happen is a, a department requestor within this building has to provide a requisition request to a department head who reviews it. It then goes to our Business Services Office for review. That's Robin Lane back here. And then a step that we've inserted as well is that it goes to our Budget Director for review to determine if there are funds available for the requisition, for the purchase. Then the fourth step is that the Business Service Office itself will do the purchasing or the issuing, or have a purchase order issued through the Knox County Buy, uh, Munist System, or the purchase will occur on an E-card. The final step that we've implemented is that these purchases, any goods that are shipped or provided, they will only go to the end user, not to a person who has ordered the goods or is somewhere in the ordering and approval process. Part of the challenge in all of this is knowing what the volume of outstanding E-card transactions is, because there's almost a ninety-day lag in those transactions, some of those transactions occurring, the approval, and then the posting of those transactions to our general ledger, because all of those transactions go through Knox County Finance. We don't control every step in that process. One of the things I want to put, point out too, is that we've eliminated the E-card use for any grant expenditures, because Knox County earns a commission on these transactions, but they don't share it with us. So if we're using federal funds and using an E-card for purchasing on those federal funds, if we don't get the commission back and credit it back, then we can't do that. So we've cut that out. The E-card program, it really exists to, it's, it's a convenience, as far as purchasing and paying and all of the E-cards that were once issued to curriculum instruction areas have been canceled. Because as I like to say to Keith, you saw Keith earlier, there are no CTE emergency purchases, that he should be planning his purchases, he doesn't need an E-card, and we'll be happy to handle those.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McMillan has his microphone down, I don't know if it's.
Just a quick question, in reference to, I believe you stated there on the, on the first page that you had, we'd reduced the number of cardholders down to twenty.
Yes.
Are the, the, the twenty people that have those cards, are they authorized at different levels or, or different limits?
Yes.
Would you, you know, you, you don't have to be too specific, but what's like the lowest range to the, to maybe two or three that are at the maximum level, or, or tell us how many are, are at the maximum level?
The, the, the lowest range on a card, and this is the request limit, is five thousand dollars, and the highest is a half million dollars. And those two cards that are at a half, or three cards that are a half million, those are departmental cards. So for example, in in maintenance and operations, they buy a lot of bulk purchases and they use the E-cards for those. And so this is, they have to have a higher limit on them.
Okay, well you've kind of raised my curiosity now. You said the lowest was five thousand, what would you say the, 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 the average limit is for, you know, of the, the majority of the cards? You said three of them, there were only three of them, we were at the max. Could the would it range from twenty thousand to fifty thousand on the, the majority of the cards, or would it be above fifty, above a hundred, where?
They're, they're all over the board, I mean, some of the maintenance cards especially are ten to twenty-five thousand, when that's where the most of the cards are. But then we have cards that, for example, are in the, in the Human Resources, which are travel cards, and they have a five thousand limit on them. And then we actually have a Board, Board Secretary Card and a Superintendent Secretary Card, and they're at ten thousand. I don't know that those two cards have ever been used, but those are the kinds of limits, we, we were, had those limits reviewed by the executive who was in charge of the department to make sure that they were adequate or not excessive.
Okay, that, that's fair, you've answered the question, I just wanted to get a general idea, you know, as to what, what type of money limits we were talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, that pretty much sums it up, I don't want to take a whole lot of your time, if you have questions, be happy to answer them.
Ms. Hale.
Just one, Gary, on the, you're talking about purchase orders. Is, is it still going to be able to be efficient, as far as, from the time a, a requisition is done, until it gets approved, I mean, I know sometimes that, it's a, it's a fine, fine line there.
Yeah, let me just give you an example, the one, one of the steps that we've put in place is the Budget Director's Review and Approval of the requisitions here. And I checked with him yesterday, and I said, how many of these are you getting each day, and he said, well, it varies obviously from day to day, but he might be receiving ten to fifteen to twenty a day. I said, does it take you a long time to review and approve, he said, no, I can get this done in, you know, a half an hour, and it's the first thing I do in the morning, is send it up to Business Services. So once that step is take, takes place, it goes to Business Service for the actual purchase transaction.
So is there one, just one Budget Director?
Yes.
And so everything?
It's him back there, Joe Snyder.
Oh, hey, Joe. So you mean everything, we only have ten to fifteen a day?
No, these are requisitions that go through the Business Services Office, the requisitions that might go through maintenance, for example, those would be different, that's being handled in the maintenance department.
So they have a Budget Director?
They have a, Alison Shepherd manages the finances in the maintenance department. And then they have, obviously, Chris, Chris Tow, Tow is the, is the manager now, and then Russ also is there to review what's happening in maintenance.
Okay, so it, it's depart, everything you're telling us is by department?
It is.
Okay, gotcha.
And the ones that take the most time are the internal school funds, they have to come before the board, because we have to wait for a board meeting to get those approved, issued.
Any other questions for Mr. Spencer? Thank you, Gary, for bringing this before the board, thank you. Okay. Ms. Roundtree.
Ready for public forum. We have seven folks signed up to speak, and our first speaker is Ronnie Chandler.
Thank you. Yours is not an easy job. You represent one of the one hundred largest school districts in the nation. The last list I saw, we're number sixty-six, larger than Boston, Detroit, and Atlanta Public Schools. When people hear Knox County Schools, they don't always remember that means Knox County Public Schools. This board represents sixty thousand students, eight thousand staff, and ninety-one schools, the nine of you. Together, you represent median incomes below the poverty level to median incomes of six figures in the same public school system. Suburban, rural, urban, in the same public school system. Schools that can't keep a PTA and schools that have their own foundations in the same public school system. Some schools have teachers who stay until retirement, while other schools, another school has forty percent first-time teachers unprepared for urban schools. We are both exemplary and dealing with disparities in the same public school system. Having high-quality public schools in every neighborhood is everybody's business. There is more we all can do in support of public education, if we really want what we say we want. This board is not alone, this is not just your problem. There needs to be a larger conversation, re-engaging everybody, the school system, city and county leadership, businesses, higher education, community organizations, and concerned citizens, whether you have kids in school or not. And we may even need to pay a few more tax dollars for our public schools. These circumstances are forcing false choices, this is not teachers or students. Education is an economic driver, businesses locate for a diverse and educated workforce, families with young children buy homes in neighborhoods based on the reputation of the schools. I speak to you as a product of this school system. I also speak to you as an educator, with forty years of experience in education, public education, working at the, both the community college level for twenty-three years, and the last seventeen with Knox County Schools Partnership. I often hear, every school has students who have challenges, to which I say, they're probably not the majority of your student population. I also hear across the community the question, why are we throwing all these resources at these same underperforming schools? So let me speak to that. The zip codes where high-needs schools are located are also home to higher unemployment, blue-collar wages, low homeownership, low car ownership, more community unrest, health disparities, and high numbers of single parents working hard just to make ends meet. When there are reports of violence, we know it has affected a family in these. When there are reports of violence, we know it has affected a family in these schools. Families who live near some of these schools don't have access to a grocery store and if they're ill and need a drugstore, there's no pharmacy in their neighborhood either. Staff turnover is frequent and these schools are often used as a training ground. That is why the same schools need enrichment at school for kids who don't have access to private lessons. That is why the same schools need to incentivize effective educators to come teach where kids are brilliant but who also face lots of challenges. Extended contracts help that. There are also many students of color in these same schools. We urgently need cultural competency and implicit bias training for teachers who are different from the diverse students in their classrooms. We're living in a time when we are witnessing blatant racism and hate. That is why the same schools need project grad opportunities that start at kindergarten and also need community schools, mental health, and dental, and after-school spaces that are safe and free. These are some of the reasons we provide additional layers of support at schools with concentrated challenges. Children from families of limited resources deserve quality neighborhood schools just like children from families of unlimited resources. Our challenge here is to be sure that is happening across our one public school system and we all need to care about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Wise.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your patience in allowing me to speak to you this evening. Pelosseby State's been a Project Grad partner for seventeen years. We provide scholarship support and financial aid and in-kind support for the Summer Institute. In the interest of full disclosure, I serve on the board of Project Grad. My first exposure to Grad came seventeen years ago when I was teaching summer school at Pelosseby State. For the first time, I walked into the cafeteria when the Project Grad scholars were eating breakfast and I was like, what the heck is going on here? But what I've learned over the course of seventeen years is it's a process by which you take children in elementary school and middle school and through high school and you give them opportunities, you give them support, you provide them access to what it means to have an experience on a college campus, whether it's Pelosseby State, the University of Tennessee, or the TCAT Knoxville. I had a chance to learn the kind of impact the program has on our local high schools, our local community, Pelosseby State, and the students we serve. I think we all know that the state of Tennessee has made great strides in access to post-secondary opportunities over the course of the last ten years, whether you're looking at the technical colleges, the community colleges, the university in our state. Tennessee is recognized as a national leader. We've made good progress on the drive to fifty-five, but economic circumstances are the most significant factor in determining post-secondary success. And for me, that's why Project Grad is so important because it serves our most vulnerable students in our most vulnerable communities. It looks to provide a layer of support that's absolutely critical if the young people that come from these communities are going to have a chance to be successful at TCAT Knoxville, at Pelosseby State, at any of the community colleges, or at any of the institutions that they choose to go. And they choose to go all over the region and all over the country. It is the foundation of the work of Project Grad who serves these most vulnerable students. If our state hits its goals on the drive to fifty-five without increasing attainment from the students in our most vulnerable communities, then I will argue it will have failed. Pelosseby State considers Grad a true partner in this work and is happy to continue to provide scholarship dollars for our students who enrolled with us for the Summer Institute, for all Project Grad scholars as well. Systematic change is required at Pelosseby State and all of our state higher education institutions. It's what you're working on at the K-12 level. If we're going to hit the goals of attainment and for us, the goals of the drive to fifty-five. But at our institution, we believe success happens one story at a time. And so I'm going to finish with what we would call a student success story. I had a chance over the course of the last three or four years to get to know a young man I'll call Jay. He's a Project Grad scholar. He's a student athlete. He's from one of these two high schools that Project Grad serves. I know that he walked home from ball practice just about every day because he didn't have transportation. He didn't have somebody that could come and pick him up and get him at the end of his day. He entered Pelosseby State requiring a significant amount of remediation, but he completed that remediation. He identified the academic program he wanted to complete. He established clear goals for his schooling and for his time after school and he became a leader on his campus. He will graduate in May and transfer to his chosen four-year institution. He's a great example of individual student success that benefited from the layers of support that were provided at his schools through Project Grad, through his churches, through Emerald Youth Foundation, and at Pelosseby State. I believe Grad helps create these scholars and students like Jay provides an opportunity for success that's absolutely critical if we're going to be serving, if we're going to serve those who are most vulnerable in our community, achieve the attainment goals we want from our students from high school and at post-secondary. I appreciate the time you've given me. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Mr. Buzz Thomas and so we have to just vote to let Buzz speak because he lives outside of Knox County. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay Buzz.
Here on behalf of the communists over in Blount County, I'm, no, I'm just kidding. I'll be very brief because y'all had to listen to me for a whole year. Project Grad is the oldest public-private partnership that our school district has. It predates the Great Schools Partnership. If it did not predate the Great Schools Partnership, I believe the Great Schools Partnership would have started Project Grad because Project Grad deals with our neediest students in our neediest schools. And I should also tell you that Grad created for us, us, a network of private sector donors that have contributed millions of dollars to projects of the Great Schools Partnership and Knox County schools, like community schools. So for every dollar that you have invested in Grad, you have leveraged more than that amount in private sector support. So that's a good thing to celebrate. Like Mr. Dupler, I am a trained skeptic by nature. I'm a lawyer. And although there is no statistical way to prove that Project Grad had an impact on graduation at these two urban high schools that went from about fifty percent seventeen years ago to about eighty percent today, I believe, based upon my years of experience, that Grad played a significant role. And I base that in large part on the conversations that I have had and continue to have with their teachers and administrators and students. There are certain things we can't prove statistically. I can't prove that my wife loves me statistically. I can't prove that I love her statistically, but I just know that I do. And I think if you'll take the time to go into those schools and talk to their staff, you'll be convinced, just like I am. It's convincing enough to me that I go out every year and raise money for it and I'm like you, I'm too busy doing best in things that I don't think work. But I think Project Grad does work and I hope you'll give it really serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brittany Newcomb.
Our next speaker is Heather Blakemore.
My name is Heather Blakemore and I'm a school counselor at Austin East Magnet High School. I've come to speak on how Project Grad is more than just a program. Project Grad is more than just a program because they offer free four-thousand-dollar scholarship that no other school outside of Fulton offers in Knox County. This scholarship is made available to all students at Austin East as long as you complete the minimum requirements. Project Grad is more than just a program. The college career access coaches are an extra support for our counseling office as we only have two and a half counselors. They assist us with our pit team meetings, academic interventions, job applications, scholarship assistance, and taking students by annually on college tours at a lower cost to our students. Project Grad is more than just a program. The student and family support coach is our, our in-house social worker for our students and families. They help students and families who are going through hard times by helping them navigate community resources, provide cat transit bus passes when needed, Thanksgiving baskets and Christmas gift cards during the holidays, prom dresses and tuxes for those students who cannot afford to get one and want to attend the prom, snacks during the day for those students who do not eat the night before, and provide coats during the cold season when students walk to school without a coat during the winter months. Project Grad is more than just a program. The college career success coaches are an extended family to our recent graduates and alumni. The coaches are available to take the students to college for the first time when their parent guardian do not have the means to do so. They assist them with social and emotional support while they're away from home, help them navigate life after high school with career and financial workshops, and visit the students once a year and send them care packages annually to keep the college student encouraged. Project Grad is more than just a program. They fill in the gap financially for various programs like Austin East's Robotics Club, our AP Score incentive program, Spanish club that traveled abroad, students wanting to attend other summer enrichment programs near and far, and academic celebration recognitions for our students on the right track. These are just some of the things that Project Grad does that I've witnessed for over ten years working at Austin East. I hope by hearing all of this, you will see Project Grad is more than just a fiscal cost because Project Grad is more than just a program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kinzie Parker.
I'm Kinzie Parker Zimmerman and I'm a product of Project Grad. As a third-generation Fulton graduate, Project Grad scholarship recipient, master's level graduate from UT in Communication and Information, former intern with Project Grad College Success Team, former college access coach, public speaking instructor, and current college and career access feeder team leader at Fulton, I offer a unique perspective. Having the opportunity to see grads work on both ends of the spectrum as a student and as a staff person allows me to fully appreciate and advocate for Project Grad and the important role that it plays in the lives of Knox County's most vulnerable students and families. In addition to the quantitative evidence that our organization has provided about our consistent impact, one of the intangible pieces of evidence that impacts and indeed drives the work that we do is the life of every student that we encounter on a regular basis. Without an understanding of that piece, we would be doing the board a disservice to believe that what we've provided is a comprehensive understanding of our impact. One of the requirements of working in a setting where there's such a high need is that we have to constantly combat a survival mindset. When a student struggles to know whether or not they'll be picked up from school, what they'll have for dinner that night, or if they will have dinner that night, it's difficult to get a student to see themselves as a success at the end of this week, at the end of the semester, let alone at the end of their post-secondary journey. Thus, we must combat that mindset every day that we step foot in the building. We do this by giving students exposures and experiences to give them a vision for their own futures. The work that Grad does on a regular basis definitely has an impact on the students that we serve that are economically disadvantaged, which is over eighty-five percent of our total population. However, the work of Grad pushes students to aspire beyond their circumstances regardless of socioeconomic status. For a student like me, who might not seem like your typical disadvantaged student, Grad still provided layers of support that benefited me greatly. I distinctly remembered the night before I began classes at the University of Tennessee as a freshman, laying in bed, panicking about what I was going to do the next morning. And as I'd laid there, I thought, you can do this, Kinzie. You've been to Project Grad Summer Institute. You know where Ayers Hall is and that's where your eight AM is. All you have to do is drive to the lot that you're familiar with, walk to Ayers Hall. And then after you leave Ayers Hall, you're going to go, you know, and so because I had had that experience on campus, I knew that I could be successful that following day. If my experience with Project Grad had that significant of an impact on me, a student not typically referred to as economically disadvantaged as part of that fourteen percent, how much more impact would we be having on others from those circumstances? Now that I've had the opportunity to join the Grad family as an employee, I can testify to the intentional and strategic programming that's developed to extend opportunities to students that we encourage them from kindergarten through college and even beyond. This district has proclaimed a goal of wanting to eliminate disparities for the students that are served by this board. We so appreciate your dedication to the students of Knox County schools. We know that it's not an easy job. Balancing the needs of every student served by our district would certainly be overwhelming. And we're so thankful for these opportunities for these public forums of open discourse. Thus, I'm here today to speak in this forum for those whose families may be unable to speak in this setting, those that are uncomfortable because of a lack of their own education, those that have committed to work multiple jobs to make ends meet for their families, often needing to work after normal business hours, those struggling with transportation concerns. So thank you, Knox County Board of Education, for allowing me the platform to do so.
Thank you. Our last public speaker is Todd Shelton.
Thank y'all for your work tonight and always. My thoughts tonight are related to the process of revising the disciplinary policies. And I have to say that I have, as of late, been much more excited about hearing about and talking about the behavioral intervention trainings, the teacher support trainings that are happening in PBIS and restorative practices, and the cultural competency training program that has just gotten started. It seems to be an excitement that is catching on. In attending these board meetings here and attending the disciplinary policy committee meetings this last year with other community people and the other staff that came from the district and the schools, I also attended meetings, these last meetings where we had the community forums and we had the strategic plan. And in those meetings, I see many families and teachers and district staff and school board people working very hard to improve our school system. It's not easy. We're talking about systemic changes, so it's difficult and it's slower than we wish. I certainly want to acknowledge the effort that's being made by all of these people at these levels. One of the biggest factors in the chances of success for all these programs that I mentioned and the programs that other people have mentioned that are very worthy is personnel. And personnel means funding. One of the things that I suggested at some of the forums in the community was that I wanted to see the staff be able to, and I wanted to see the board as a whole speak in a real engaging way about what it really costs to have the school system change and be as good as we want to have it. And someone on this board tonight, I saw a quote from, Lynn, it was you, some years back, said, it's up to this budget to approve, it's up to the school board to approve a budget that is the best budget for our school system. That's what our job is. It is up to the county to figure out how to pay for it. Now, obviously, nothing is that simple, but there's some simplicity in that that we need to, you know, I wish we would grab a hold of a little bit. People are asking, are working hard to convince all of us and they've had to work pretty hard for me in trying to make changes happen. And those changes mean personnel, but then I see this sort of disconnect where it's hard to come up here and ask for more personnel, you know, because this group, it's got to be skeptical, you've got to be analytical about it, that's good. But somehow, we need y'all to encourage the staff to bring their true statements that I heard in these forums from staff people, teachers, and parents about what they were worried about these systems working or not, and it was related to not having the personnel. We're just going to ask the same teachers and the same personnel to do the same, to do more work. do more work. Our teachers are dropping in number, our students have increased, our pay needs to increase to the teachers. This county hasn't had a, a school-funded tax in nineteen years. And if we so... And then the next responsibility is ours. When y'all deliver these messages and say, "This is what you think that our school system needs," then the public has to stand up and go with you to the county and try to fight for that. So, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes public forum. Move adjourn. Oh, board forum, sorry.
And I have something to say. So, that's all you reminded me of. We'll start with Ms. Thiel.
Amen. Amen. It is the job of this board to advocate for public education and what it costs, and, and if we think it costs more money, it's our job to advocate for that. But that isn't the comment I was going to make. Mr. Superintendent, I'm sorry, I was, uh, late getting here from, um, a business meeting in the tri-cities, and I did not hear your superintendent's report, so if I'm asking something that you covered about school security in your, um, report, I apologize. Um, my concern about school security issues, I was here five years ago when we invested a whole lot of money, and, um, I would just like to hear at some point what our procedures are. I know we can't make them public, so I would like to request that we be, you know, sit down with Chief of Security and go through what are the protocols, how do we train our staff, but I will tell you this, even if our staff is trained, if people want to prop doors open and students want to let people walk in, it doesn't matter how much money we spend on secure vestibules and fences, and I'm not fussing anybody, it's just a fact of life. And, um, it, it concerns me greatly that because we feel safe, we have people in buildings who think it's okay to prop a door open or let somebody follow them in, and I, and I just think we're going to have to be very vigilant on how we train and retrain and forever and ever retrain. So, I, I don't know if you addressed that in your opening statements, but I would, if, I'd like to kind of know your thoughts on that.
Some of that addressed, I guess, in the, in what we talked about earlier. One thing that wasn't addressed was the fact that, and, and this, and you're right, training has to take care of this, but in terms of people propping doors open and letting people follow them in and, and that sort of thing, that, I, but that's a training issue, and I said we were going to provide more training.
Because one of the things that concerned me is I had a, someone that works for me who said they could tell the day after this shooting, their high school got really serious about doing the things, keeping doors closed, and so that scares me.
And that's what we don't want.
That's what we don't want because we've spent a lot of money. Thank you.